All right, good evening. I'm gonna call the audit, the audit to meeting, the meeting to audit. And we shall have our invocation by school board member, school board president David Tappman and the pledge of allegiance led by school board member Mark Blue.
Please rise and join me in prayer. Gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this moment. We thank you for the children and the parents and the care and their care that you entrust us to. We thank you for the so many blessings that you give us every day. We are humbled by your glory. We ask you to be with us tonight as we make decisions that affect children's future and families' opportunities to provide for their children. We ask for a safe opening of school. We ask, Lord, that you would, you would put your hands over our community and, and have them be careful as they're on the streets and school buses are rolling. We ask you to protect us and to help us get a good start to the new school year. We are so humbled by your grace and your glory. We ask all of these things in your precious son's name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, yes ma'am. Okay, as you all know, we voted in a new policy for conducting the meetings in a timely fashion and people can now go home before the brain cells stop working and the wheels stop churning on the bus. And so, that being said, to members of the public who wish to make a public comment, we are going back to having you all submit public comment cards. Those cards are in the lobby, okay? When if you have it completed, simply reach it to our illustrious secretary, Ms. April Armond, and she will get it over to me and I will make sure you are recognized and called to the mic. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, and now moving forward past that comment, let's do our roll call, Madam Secretary.
District nine, President Tappman.
Present.
Present.
District four, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lannis. District three, Mr. Howard.
Present.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson. District six, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Godey.
Present.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
So we have a quorum. Okay, don't get, I know I was waiting for you to say. Thank you, that's all right, that's all right. So now we move forward with item B1, receive as information, updates from the superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. So we're so excited, as you know, we're going to be opening up schools. This Saturday, as many of you may know, August 6th, will be our back-to-school bash at the Raising Cain Center from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's going to be open to the public and all schools will be individually represented and positioned to answer any questions the community may have. There'll be games, health screenings, COVID vaccinations, student haircuts, face painting, food, as well as entertainment, including student performances and student bands. Our employees will be on hand to share information about school registration, bus routes, nutrition services, and much more. This will be a one-stop shop for district families to gear up for the new school year. We're excited to have them join us for this event. And if you have any questions, you can click on our website, www.ebrschools.org for more information about the event to sign up for families. I don't know if Chief of Technology Amy, if you could pull up just to show folks our website so we can show on the website, maybe on the screen, just where families can find whatever they need. We've also upgraded a lot of things for our website to make it much more family-friendly. So we welcome the community to go online to be able to find anything that they need. The technology team has been trying to make sure that we have a much more responsive website to families and also for us to reach out to families more so they can find out more information as we get ready for the school year. So, as you all know, we've had LEAP scores were released by the State Department of Education yesterday. We're encouraged by the progress of our students as the results show evidence and growth in multiple areas across the district. Overall, the district increased by 1% in the mastery and above across all grade levels and subjects, including high school subjects. In mathematics, the district was a plus 3% growth in mastery and above achievement in grades three to eight. Levels inclusive of high school varied slightly with a plus 2% gain at the district level. ELA also increased plus 2% as did statewide peers across all grades and subjects inclusive of high school. The science data trended with a statewide result with a plus 2% gain across all grades and subjects inclusive of high schools. Both the EBR district and the state saw no change in social studies data from this year as compared to the previous year. And over 50 schools within the LEA demonstrated growth in mastery and above results when reviewing all grades and all subjects. 14 EBR district, EBR district schools averaged a greater than 5% increase in percent mastery change, with Progress Elementary leading the way with a plus 15% increase. Now, I tell folks, of course, this data was just released about 36 hours ago. So, so we are still poring over the results and underlying information we can glean from the scores and will spotlight some of the schools in a full report on LEAP scores at the August regular meeting later this month. One thing, as we tell everybody, it's important that we continue to stay aligned, to continue to do this work together, and more importantly, to be cohesive as we continue to do progress. I wanted to make sure this is only the beginning, we tell folks, but we want to give our teachers, our paraprofessionals, and all the staff, including bus drivers, custodians, and everybody, because everybody's important in trying to make progress, that we're proud of their hard work they did last year, and we expect even more better work this year. As you know, as the coach, I have to keep telling you, you have to keep doing better. So we expect progress, but we are in the right direction and we're excited about that to show gains and progress. And Madam Vice President, that is my report.
Okay, and then, real quickly, when you do the more detailed report on next meeting, can you provide for us where we are now, there we are, post-COVID, in comparison to pre-COVID, so like 2019? I know some schools made very high gains, like Belfer Montessori, where my amazing grandson attends. And matter of fact, they up 42% in mastery. And so, definitely excited about that. But then, for each school, if we could see what the, what the comparison is from 2019 and then now post, post-COVID, or at least post 12,000 students going from the virtual and then us having to, you know, close classrooms and whatnot due to COVID exposure, if we get that level of information?
Absolutely, we can do that. And I just wanted to preface that, just so we can level set a little bit with the community on progress. When, when students went on, as you know, we have not reached COVID, pre-COVID levels. When students had to go out of school, we've had to catch them up. So we have, this data, you will see that we've done better than we did last year. And so, you'll see that set of progress, and our goal is every year to continue to increase and grow. So I just want to preface everybody in that way, because remember that when COVID came, students either did not go to school, there was technology. And so, the good thing is that we're seeing tremendous amount of grade gains and, you know, and also we've also saw that through our benchmark assessments, which has helped, really helped a lot through quarterly reports on helping teachers to pre-predict their performance. So we will have that data.
Thank you very much, and Board colleague Howard.
I was just gonna request that we have the data disaggregated by subgroups, that's all, thank you.
Absolutely.
Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, that is it. So moving forward with item C1, pupil progression plan. These are items for consideration. Again, public, if you would like to comment on any of these items for consideration during the public comment part, please go to the lobby, get a public comment card, fill it out completely, and then reach it to our illustrious secretary, Sister April Armond. All right, so moving forward with the pupil progression plan, the recommended action is consideration of a request for the approval of the 2223 school year district pupil progression plan.
Submit.
All right. And can I get a second? Seeing no request to speak from the board. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Godey was the first and then Blue was the second. Okay. All right, so no request to speak from the board. Public comment. Oh, you, where, did I get the card? Oh, it's already been, I didn't see anything already submitted, I apologize. Okay, and, okay, all right, new process. Yes, Sister Storm Matthews.
For the pupil progression plan, I serve on the committee as a special ed parent and teacher. I absolutely approve this plan. We did the same process we do every year, it's a good plan. One thing, I did bring something forward this year, we decided though, it wasn't policy, that it was more of a procedure. So Superintendent, I do would like for you to, with the summer school committee, to open discussion, because one thing that I did bring up was that we have some students who fail at the semester. And we need to do something about that, it happens at the middle school. And I would like to talk to you about that later, to see if we can fill in those gaps and open it up like for the electives that aren't offered in the summer, so we can fix that, because we decided we couldn't really fix that with pupil progression. But the plan itself is good and I do support it, thank you.
Thank you, seeing no other requests to speak on this item, back to the board. Seeing no request to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote.
If you, if we could just make sure that the names of the results stay up.
Can we do a roll call?
Yes, Madam Secretary, please call the roll vote, roll call vote.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District three, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
District four, Vice President Collins.
Yay.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Godey.
Yes.
District nine, President Tappman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving forward with item C2, superintendent's performance objectives and targets. The recommended action is consideration of a request for the approval of the superintendent's performance objectives and to amend the superintendent's performance targets. Can I get a motion?
I missed the motion.
All right, and any second. Board member Howard.
And could we just, you want to hit it a little bit, or, please?
As a staff presentation, not in response to A, it's not his five minutes, right? Okay, yes.
He said he'd be about 35.
Okay, don't.
Good evening, Board, Vice President Collins, yes, subject to statute 1785, 1754, I'm sorry. State statute 1754, the board is required to adopt performance objectives to superintendents and then submit those to State Department as part of its contract. Each year, the superintendent reconsiders and the board reconsiders the objectives and the targets. And then the board votes to approve those, and so this is subject to statute. The proposed objectives and targets comply with law. There are certain academic requirements and certain requirements that, that require the board to put in place targets that address academic needs in schools, especially high need schools in districts such as ours. And so that is included in the superintendent's performance objectives. Dr. Narcisse has reviewed those with me. I've reviewed them with you guys heavily this week. If there are any questions, I'll take them now, but these are recommended by the General Counsel.
Okay, and then, real quickly, someone was here at the board dice and they forgot their iPhone, and I'm on pad with a dime on it. I'm gonna pass this down to Madam Secretary. Was it his? Is this your cellphone? He wanted to give us more than one present, okay? All right, so then, I'm sorry, let's see here. Seeing no request to speak from the board, public comment. Yes, we do. Gotta get used to this. And once again, we have Sister Storm Matthews. Okay, thank you. And seeing no other cards for a public comment. Moving back to the board, we have Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. A couple of comments around this. If the objectives are matched to the targets, would you please list them in an order that clearly shows how they relate to the, to the target section? And so they do correlate, right? The objectives support the targets. It would be a lot easier to show how they, how they support the targets, so that when we're moving, we're looking at this, we can, we can, it's a lot more understandable. Could you, could you do that? Could you make those correlations before we go, before we go to the full board, so that we can see, you know, how they relate? Because some, some people are thinking that the objectives are supposed to be measurable, but the targets are the ones that are measurable and the objectives should line up with the targets, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, the targets are ways to look at achieving objectives. I will, between this board meeting, next board meeting, we can try to correlate the targets to the objectives. The objectives tend to be broader. They can be measured, but they're not measured necessarily by data. They may be measured by board member opinion, board member feedback, et cetera. If you remember, in December, we conduct an evaluation of the superintendent where he meets with the board and you provide him feedback in writing and in person. That feedback is tied primarily to the objectives. And so things like interaction with the community, communication between the superintendent and the board, et cetera, those are the things that we look at in terms of a more conversational evaluation of feedback. The targets are tied specifically to data and accomplishments. They're also tied to performance pay. And so, some of those targets will correlate to objectives, not all of them. The targets may be specific to academic requirements in state statute, but also our strategic plan. And so they tend to correlate more with the strategic plan and our state law requirements. The objectives are more what board members want to see the superintendent accomplish in different areas. And so, I will try to correlate those for you, Ms. Ware Jackson. They may not exactly match up, but they do connect, and I can do that before the next meeting. I can send the board the document and make it known to the public as well.
Okay, great. And with regard to the, the facilities master plan that's in there, I see that the, we're not expected for board approval before year 2324. And I know our master plan will not only involve land use and properties, but also programming and people as it relates to feeder patterns and for schools from elementary to middle school to high school. And clearly, we're not waiting for a master plan before we start new programming in our buildings and with feeder patterns. So I know we have a lot of parts already in place, in-house, rather, that we can use for some of our more immediate goals. So I'm requesting that the next time we, we have any items coming before the board that's related to schools or anything dealing with facilities, that we have a map that we can look at built upon some of the things that we already have in place. So we have, we can combine some maps that already have the locations, the programming, capacity, enrollment. And if we could include schools nearby that are not EBR schools, so that when we are looking at any changes in our, any changing in programming or looking, looking at adding something new, we can clearly see what's there in the landscape and so we can more clearly make a decision and clearly see where everything is. So we're not confusing park forests with, with the other parks and, you know, that kind of thing. Because, because, you know, if you're living on this side of town and you're not used to what's going on or where everything is on, on the other, it can clearly get a little confusing. So if we can see it, we can, we can have a lot better, a lot better understanding of, of what we have and where we're moving and and make a better decision. So I'd appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay. Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the roll. Please call the vote, excuse me.
Please vote. Oh, it helps if I open the vote, huh? Sorry. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C3, stipend, consideration of a request for the approval of a $3,000 stipend for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System employees for the 2223 school year. Strategic alignment, operational excellence, funding source, answer. Can I get a motion? Board member Dyson. Board member Blue is the second. Seeing no request to speak from the board. Come on down, Sister Storm Matthews, for a public comment.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. I wish Board Member Lannis was here because you do not know how many text messages, how many inbox messages from Paris, from clerks, from bus drivers, from cafeteria workers, from everybody that, does that mean I get it too? Do I get it too? Do I get it too? Do I get it too? I said, y'all, let me look up what this A, was it A25A, those As. I said, let me, let me pull up the salary schedule and see what these letters mean, let me check. I had to look, so it might be better if we can put that out there so people know exactly, because you had to hold the Chromebook like this to see what they were, but people are very, very happy. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. We did say two last meeting, though. This board is not gonna be the same board next semester. So I would like to see the next one come before this board leaves in, in December. But thank you, we appreciate it.
Having no other cards for a request to speak on this item, back to the board. Board President David Tappman.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. And I hope this is, I hope you rule this in order, but just because we're talking stipends and I know we're trying to deal with vacancies, where, where are we on vacancies? Is that in order?
I think it is.
Yes, President Tappman, let me give you that number, sorry.
You're cutting into my time.
Sorry. All right, all right. As you may know, we've had to make a few decisions, so as of today, we have 78 vacancies in the school system. As you know, this is, this is probably one of the lowest we've had in, I always want to give context on where we were and where we came from in 1920. Year 1920, we had 178 vacancies at this time. In 2020, 21, we had 233 vacancies. And last year, we had 219 vacancies, and so we have now 78 vacancies. And if you haven't known, we've had to make a few decisions. The, working with the, our executive directors had to work with our school leaders and also we've had to make decisions on coaches, which are going back to help support in some classrooms. So we've had to do all hands on deck and make some of those decisions. And I just wanted to say publicly, I thank the coaches and others who have worked with us, just so we can get school up and running temporarily. And we are still in the process of hiring, I tell folks. So our goal is to continue to do that, but we're at 78 vacancies right now.
Thank you, I appreciate that and I appreciate the staff's work, that's really great news. That's it, Madam Vice President, thank you.
Okay. Superintendent, do those vacancies include sites not advertised on our job board sites? For example, I'm aware of, thank you for all the time. I'm aware of at least one high school with one kindergarten teacher, but 88 kindergarteners enrolled on that site. And that school, that school's need for kindergarten is not listed. There's no job advertisement for that. And so, in terms of vacancies per our state prescribed classroom size limit, can we get information based on that in terms? can we get information based on that in terms of?
Uh, yes, we can do that. And I could, we can give you some information right now. Ms. Hall, would you have any of that? We can share with the board. And for your area too, if you wanted to know if the schools in your area, Mr. Brickhouse and the Edies here as well, if there's, we can give you an example of what we have been doing.
Hi. So just to be succinct, um, so yes, as when we get the vacancies, we post them immediately. So if I know what's for specific school you're referring to, that would help me a lot. But we post as we get them.
Since we trying to be mindful of our time, this is our first go around. Let's do this. Just can you, uh, before the next meeting, go into the system, look at number of enrolled students, see how many teachers are filled for those spots? And then go from there and walk it back and say, this is our true vacancy rate.
Got it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, and I did hear that there was some, uh, major shifts and changes in terms of, uh, to try to help alleviate our vacancies with, uh, people on the district level going back to classrooms, et cetera. And so I know that you all are working hard to address the issue. Thank you very much. Board Member Dyson.
Hi. I just want to thank staffing and our superintendent for working through this. I, um, I think that, um, you know, realizing that we've got to be all hands on deck is, is an excellent, uh, way to help us through this. And I appreciate all the efforts being made. And I also, uh, that's with regard to staffing. But as far as this stipend, I am thrilled to be able to be offering this stipend to our employees and, um, that we're making this happen. I appreciate this coming to us during this board meeting so that our, our employees will know that this is coming and, um, for the, for excellent way to start the school year. So thank you very much for everyone's work on this.
Board Colleague Ware Jackson.
In the same vein of all hands on deck, uh, I visited a few schools this week and I noticed that on the, on the, um, the bulletin board at one of the elementary schools, that very saying was there, all hands on, on deck. And specifically because they don't have any fifth grade teachers and only one fourth grade teacher. So, um, you know, and, and but what they're going to do is like take, uh, some ancillary, you know, temporarily hopefully, and move them into those positions. So, so I know that a lot of people are doing double duty and, uh, I just, um, I wish that they could get, um, some kind of extra incentive or some kind of bonus for those, those teachers that are doing double duty and, you know, really having to, to go above and beyond trying to fill in in, in areas where we don't have any teachers at all. And, you know, they're, they're trying to, to, to do their job and do the other as well. Overall, though, uh, with the schools that I visited, they were really, really impressed with, um, with the way that their, uh, their vacancies have been filled, you know? And, and we're really grateful that they heard from, from the board and from the public around, uh, those areas because they felt like it, they, they wondered if it, it sort of incentivized, you know, the whole administration to, to really work harder. So I appreciate it and they appreciate it as well.
Now moving forward with item, oh. Madam Secretary, please call the vote on this very important item.
Please vote. The motion carries.
All right. And moving forward with item C4. Memorandum of Understanding Baton Rouge Community College. The recommended action is a consideration of a request for the approval of an MOU between EBR School Board and Baton Rouge Community College to provide dual enrollment courses under the Early College Academy Agreement for the 2223 school year. Can I go right? Board Member Howard and Board Member Go Jay. Board Member Ware Jack, um, excuse me, Board Member Dyson.
Yes, um, I very much appreciate this work as well. I do have a question that I've, I've been asking. And I haven't gotten a clear, uh, understanding of how this is going to work. And it may require that, um, I don't know, you might be able to answer this. I just was trying to, as a matter of economics and financial, so if a student is enrolled and then they do a very early drop, you know, before N E W and, and all of that, will, how is the mechanism going to work for then we don't pay for that course? And so have we already paid for it at that point? Or do we wait until after that drop date and then we issue payment?
Yes. Good evening, Board Member Dyson.
Thank you.
Yes. So to your question, we're going to maintain the actual, um, policies of BRCC, which currently allows for students to drop a course within the first 10 days of a course without being, um, without occurring a cost. But anything that happens a, after the drop period will be a withdrawal. So withdrawals will accrue a cost.
Exactly. So I hope we're trying in our, our teachers and to truly, really try to make sure that this is going to work within that 10 days. Because we just, you know, we hate to be paying for things that we aren't receiving for our students. And, um, that, that 10 days needs to be real known. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I have a, a real hard question to ask. There's been a lot of, uh, questions around it, but not, not a whole lot of clarity. And, uh, so I just have to be, uh, bold with this one, uh, Mr. Superintendent. Dealing with, uh, dual enrollment, uh, as it relates to, uh, pathways to the pathways to Bright Futures Program. I know the, um, uh, Baton Rouge Community College was like the, the main, the main focus here with, with the dual enrollment, or at least the initial focus. And, um, we, we know that in a previous board meeting, the budget for Pathways to Bright Futures, uh, failed for a lack of a second. So there wasn't any board approval on it. But of course, we all want, um, we want dual enrollment. Absolutely. We all wanted to offer college level courses as early as the ninth grade as a choice, but many didn't want it as a requirement. Can you tell me, uh, cause we're still seeing the promos running on, on TV? And, um, so we'd like to know how, uh, the MOUs with the universities and with dual enrollment and, and all, how does this all relate to, uh, pathways? Or what state are we in, uh, with Pathways to Bright Futures?
Yes, yes, Board Member Jackson. So the board actually, uh, just for clarity to the community, the board actually approved the Pathways Program way back, I'll make sure I'm accurate, in November for the program. The second one that did not, um, get the second to go through pass, that dealt with a particular component of expenditures of that. So, um, but this board already passed the Pathways to Bright Future. When we brought that other, um, uh, that the other expenditure up, that was one of the requests that, uh, one board mem, uh, one of the board members made, it kind of confused a little bit on whether the program was still going or not. But this board actually passed it in the November board meeting. And, um, Ms. Smith, if you can come on up, just want to make sure I give the board specifics. And if I could add one other thing as well is, um, our school system, because tonight you're going to see BRCC, LSU and Southern, uh, MOU, uh, MOU agreements. We've always done MOU agreements with all those institutions. So this is, uh, uh, a part of the regular agreements that we do. A part of that process. But, uh, but the Pathways to Bright Future was approved in the November board meeting. Can you explain a little bit the difference? Cause I think that confused a little bit, uh, the community as well.
But it must have not been a, a particular line item that was named Pathways to Bright Futures, right? So in the November meeting.
So, um, good evening, um, Board Member Ware Jackson. So in the S R funding and also in the budget that was passed, um, in the last month, we, there is a line that says dual enrollment courses. And that money, that money was explicitly allocated to support dual enrollment, implementations across our schools, particularly in line with our high school commitment to offering these courses. And so I, I'm glad that Dr. Narciss clarified that what we're asking for tonight is what we traditionally do each year. These are MOUs just to make sure that we are in agreement with our post-secondary providers to provide access to students to take post-secondary courses in high school at these locations.
Right. I understand that. I was just, you said we passed Pathways to Bright Futures in November. But how is that related to, um, the budget that did not pass a couple of months or so ago?
So what occurred a few months ago? There was a, there was an inquiry for a fiscal note about what those expenditures would be. And so there was a conversation back and forth with general counsel and a board member about what that should be. And so my consideration then was that we're asking for a fiscal note. That's an item that we're not presenting to you for authorization. We present that to you for information. But we did, we listed as the item. But the actual memorandum that we submitted to you was for us to define for you how the money that we were going to utilize for the upcoming school year would be expended to support the Pathways Program in our schools.
And that was November?
No, no, no. That was the last board meeting. That is the memorandum that we presented, I believe, in June.
Five seconds.
That's fine.
Okay. So then, uh, to be clear, nothing in November, because I was the board colleague that went back and forth. And I just was really going to actually let this go because it's a thin line between already dual enrollment and then expansions with Bright Futures. And it's a convoluted ya-ya. I wasn't going to go into the ya-ya. But since people want to get up here and pretend like the agenda item in November said Bright Futures to indicate an expansion from what we already did, then the record needs to be corrected. What I was expressly told in November was that we voted for $5 million worth of dual enrollment and those expenditures was only for supplies. Didn't involve salaries and all the other stuff related to dual enrollment. So what is frustrating is, don't go further down the unnecessary rabbit hole. Just stick to the facts and the truth. And then you can gain the trust of folks and I won't have to make comments that I had no interest in making. This is a MOU. There's no monetary attachment to it. I was going to leave it alone because it's a MOU, just as the superintendent said, that, uh, we do all the time. I don't have enough information to say for sure that you're expanding bright, dual enrollment to the point of saying that it's Bright Futures. But when you get up here and you make stuff sound a certain way and you try to frame the narrative as F, that ain't even what, that as F, the previous motion didn't fail for the expansion of dual enrollment via Bright Futures, when the, what was, what failed was the bulk of the expense. Whether money was donated or not, that was not approved. So y'all do have to come back to us for that. That's all I got. Thank you. Public comment? Uh, again, Sister Storm Matthews.
To Board Member Jill Dyson's point, um, to making sure, this does require, as state law requires, parental permission, students' signature and the principal or designee, state law actually says the counselor, but I guess that would be the principal's designee, which, you know, you also have to have a 2.5 or the ACT requirement. And, or the counselor recommendation. One thing I will say about it, I understand this, this MOU was not done by us. It was done by BRCC, but you guys may want to reach out to BRCC to have them correct it because the link that they put in for the Board of Regents link is from 2017. And while I like those requirements better because they would have our children be better prepared for dual enrollment, those are no longer the requirements. They're much more stringent. You have to have a 2.75 and I think a 19 on the ACT in order to participate. So if that's what passes with that link in it, then those are those higher requirements and BRCC put the wrong thing in. That should be changed. But yeah, I, I did go through it because I did think it was Bright Futures at first too, trying to sneak in. But with those requirements and parental signature, didn't think that it was. But yeah, Bright Futures failed. Thank you.
Seeing no other, did you do a card, uh, card?
I did not do a card.
Can you go get one and, and be ready to fill it out and give it to Sister, uh,
I'll be happy to turn it in.
Sister Secretary. April Arm, thank you.
Awesome. I wasn't going to say anything about this one. I just had the C ready and write down the number next. Jamie Robinson, um, District 3. What concerns me the most around this, um, and like I said, I wasn't going to speak to this MOU. But when you talk about pathways to brighter futures, we're making an attempt to bring children to another level that they're not yet prepared for. What concerns me is we have children that are in the ninth grade who are still on sixth grade reading level and are going to be encouraged to take a dual enrollment course. What about preparing them for the ninth grade? What about getting them on the grade level in which they need to be? So I would hope that in the schools that, where we're encouraging all of the students in ninth grade academy to take these dual enrollment courses, there's also avenues for them to get to the level in which they first need to obtain before they are able to, um, be successful in, um, obtaining a dual enrollment. Because we have to be careful about setting our children off of failure before they get to college with that W on their transcript or hurting their GPA. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. James Finney.
Thank you. I have several points to make. I don't necessarily object to the general concept of the, uh, school district providing dual enrollment opportunities to kids that will benefit from them. But there are several things I need to mention. First, the visitor from Maryland mentioned board action in November. I would love to know exactly which agenda item he's talking about that makes the spending for this already a done deal. Speaking of spending, I see no fiscal note. So this will cost nothing? Will it cost nothing? And then if so, from what account? So if you're going to advance this, I would advance it without recommendation so that the administration can finish its job and provide enough useful information so you as a board can do your job. I was hoping that eventually this is where we'd finally see the plan of study that would indicate a general list of requirements that would allow a high school student in four years to earn an associate's degree with some title from a specific institution. And I did not see that attached. I saw a list of random course numbers. That's great. But if the premise that the administration has been selling us for the last year is the kids will graduate with high school degrees and associate's degrees from BRCC, we definitely miss, lead, need a list of coursework readily available. As my colleague, Ms. Matthews, mentioned from the, from the audience, parental authorizations are required. It seems that would be. It seems that would be such a fundamental issue would be mentioned in the MOU. And if it's here, I didn't happen to notice it. I did see that students might be required to conduct, have background checks conducted. That is in general provisions, Part Six. That could be an issue unless parents are fully involved. Um, it looks like nobody's finished proofreading this quite. Maybe it's close. But I saw in Part D, throughout the term of the MOU, there might be issues. And then in Part A, it says, should a school district violate BR, I'm sorry, should a school district provided instructor violate BRCC rules? BRCC may withdraw authorization for the instructor to participate in the ECA and school district. I hope we're not giving BRCC the authority to terminate school system employees from the school system. And then later in Roman numeral five, Part B, it looks as though there is maybe the possibility that if students are not successful, that they're going to be stuck for the cost of the course. And that's a big problem. So please tweak these and try it again in a month or two, even though schools already started.
Oh, Bailey Jackson? Had to be out of the person.
Thank you. I, I think if the process moving forward after the last, uh, board policy had been clarified to the public, we might have known exactly what the procedure was here. Um, so thank you for letting me come in late. Um, I, I have a lot of issues with what was discussed here as far as the expenditure approval or not approval. Um, we had it clarified by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor that you are required to have a public meeting around ESER funding, and that included dual enrollment. So when we have someone come up here and say that the board vote on expenditures basically didn't matter, what was the point? What, what, what did you all think you were doing? This is very problematic. And I, I'm not putting this on the board. I'm, 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 I'm very concerned that you're not getting the right information and you, you didn't even have a second for expenditures, but you were told tonight by staff members that that vote didn't matter. That vote didn't matter. Why was it on the agenda? Why did you vote? Why did we come up here and speak and talk about this? This is, this is a big problem. We, we knew from the Louisiana Legislative Auditor that the vote on ESER back in 2021 didn't count to approve a budget for 2022, 2023. And that's why Mr. Shamlin agreed to have a public budget hearing on ESER. Because we pushed it. We, the public, pushed it because it was by statute. I mean, this is so frustrating. Uh, you know, I, you know, I support this, but I, it, it is really embarrassing, really embarrassing to see that this is a conversation right now and that you all were told you had an agenda item that you all voted on that really didn't matter. We wasted our time. You wasted your time. You were gaslit. And we're, as the public, being gaslit and we're sick of it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to run in and say this, but it's frustrating. Thank you.
Board Colleen Dyson.
Yes, um, in conversations that I've had, um, I, I would like for the, some of this to get clarity with our General Counsel, please. Um, the, uh, parental piece is what I'm speaking to. And if you could give us some clarity, um, it's my understanding that we're going to follow the standard that BRCC accepts.
That's correct.
And so could you please just explain that so that public will know?
Yes, ma'am. Under section, uh, Roman numeral three, A to B, um, it specifically states that, um, registration requires signatures by the school principal to designate the parent, guardian, and the student. So that's in the MOU proposed by BRCC. So that's a requirement that the staff will follow. Um, I don't expect that there'll be any other, any other route taken.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Um, I have two questions. When, for example, it was in the paper that, uh, some schools had, uh, lots of students enrolled in dual enrollment already, um, what has been our process to get the parental improvement done for those students already enrolled? Um, also, can General Counsel clarify dual enrollment, dual enrollment funding in general?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm assuming you're referring to the item brought to the board, uh, a month ago around expenditures. So the board considered an item in June or July, my memory's bad. Um, but that, that item specifically, I believe, proposed by the Vice President was for the approval of expenditures related specifically to the Pathways program. And that item failed, okay? Um, and so that was to authorize expenditures related to that program. What the board is considering tonight is an MOU, an agreement with the university to enact dual enrollment, um, if needed. However, the board will still need to consider an action to approve expenditures. My understanding is the superintendent will bring that at the regular board meeting, uh, in two weeks because there's a 60-day requirement that we can't reconsider an action that's considered and failed by the board. So my understanding is, and Dr. Narcisse can speak to that, that we will bring that item to the board for approval in two weeks. And so this is approval of an agreement with the university that we will need regardless of whether the expenditure is approved or not. This has got to be put in place. It's not a contract, but it's an understanding with the university. It's how we will operate. Does that help?
Yes, it does. And so then, uh, for further clarity, though, the MOU speaks to tuition costs, et cetera. No tuition and costs can be paid without express approval by the board on that light on, line item of expenses.
With regard to the Pathways program.
Okay.
Other dual enrollment programs.
Have already been approved.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Board, Colleen Ware Jackson?
Okay. For even further clarity, you mentioned that an item will be coming back to the board in, uh, at the regular board meeting, Mr. Shamlin. Um, and this is specifically for Pathways, right?
Yes, ma'am. The item was brought to the board, uh, again, June.
The same budget item that came to us that failed for lack of a second?
Yes, ma'am. And because of that, we were, we cannot bring the item back for 60 days. So my understanding is that that item and several others will be brought back to the board as a standalone or unfinished business item at the regular meeting this month, which will be two weeks from tonight.
Well, that could have been the answer to the question I asked previously because I was asking specifically about Pathways and how it would be, how we're going to do Pathways if the item failed, uh, for lack of a second. Uh, so what Ms., uh, Karan was speaking to, uh, just clouded up the water even more, speaking about something that actually passed in November that wasn't really attached by name to Pathways. So I'm just requesting complete transparency on this because, as I said previously, uh, the only objection to Pathways has been around parental consent and student consent for ninth graders. Everyone that, that I'm aware of, um, was really excited about an option for, um, even ninth graders to take dual enrollment. Um, that's been the only, the only objection that I've heard from the public, from, from any parent. So, um, I think if, you know, if, if that item were cleared up, that little piece of that were, were, uh, cleared up, there would be, uh, no contest. So I'm looking forward to, um, complete clarity and, uh, any insight that you can add, Mr. Shamlin, would be much appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call a vote. Please vote.
The motion carries.
Moving forward with Item C5, Professional Services Contracts IDEA. The recommended action is a consideration of a request for the approval of professional services contracts between East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. A, Egan Healthcare Corporation doing business as Egan Ashner, H, uh, HCBS, River Parish is in the amount of $166,000 to provide LPN nursing services. And then B, Allied Instructional Services LLC in the amount of $25,000 to provide orientation and mobility services. Can I get a motion? Okay. Board Member Tap, Board President Tapman, and then Board Member Ware Jackson, seconds? Is, this is not an item that anybody needs to recuse themselves from, is it? Okay. All right. All right. Seeing no requests to speak from the board. All right. Uh, Mr. James Finney. Public comment.
Thank you. Through the, uh, recent months and years, we often hear members of the board express frustration that a particular contract's impact on budgets isn't explained. So in isolation, there's nothing objectionable looking about this item. What we don't see attached as backup is how much, well, in what, particular what part of IDEA Part B this money is going to come from? And then how much has already been designated for spending already and how much is left available for the administration to spend? And I wish that you, as a board, would insist on that kind of attachment, call it a fiscal note, call it due diligence, whatever. I would strongly recommend you start insisting that happen anytime you're being asked to approve spending money. And I will be back to repeat that several times this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, all righty. Sister Karanda Corley, public comment?
Great afternoon. Excuse my attire. We was ready for aluwa and, uh, for all the children with disabilities, their families and friends. Um, I would like to speak against this item. Reason being, number one, this, um, item does not specify how many nurses we would actually be providing. It said one at South Downs and then it said one at elementary, middle, or high school, which means that that could be two. Or South Downs would have actually one nurse and then we would split a nurse between five or six different schools, which means that we will be leaving children with disabilities that may have healthcare as a related service without medical. Right now, I am aware that Northeast Elementary and High, a school that is the furthest away from Our Lady of the Lake Children's Hospital, does not currently have nursing. It was taken away and my child has health as a related service, which creates a problem as it relates to a child with a disability being able to attend school safely starting Monday. We have to make sure that schools that are far away, Woodlawn is another one, it's not close to a hospital. So they will not get emergency medical services. They will not have anyone with, uh, with medical expertise to do it. What we are doing is we will be putting this on staff, on the secretaries to administer medication and do insulin, teachers to be doing peg, uh, pegged feedings, childcare. That's not what they're trained for. To be a nurse, a registered nurse, you have to go to school four years. That's not something that I would say that we should put on our underpaid staff, especially the paraprofessionals that's not even getting, uh, $20,000. So when we talk about the IDEA funding that we're gonna use, we need to talk about using it in a more feasible and economical way. We want to make sure that each and every child that have, or have medical as a related service or that require medical attention can actually get appropriate medical attention. But would you want for Tremell Howard to provide you medical attention, Mr. Narcisse? He's not trained to do it, but would you want that? I mean, this is the thing that you're asking our parents to say that we agree to. And unfortunately, that's not something that's documented in the actual medical forms that you have on your nice, beautiful website. Those forms say that we're gonna have medical personnel and it does not say that we're only gonna have them for two hours or three hours a day. So I do ask that you decline this and that you make it to where we have a nurse every day, all day, for the 180 days our kids will be in school. Thank you.
Seeing, uh, having no other public comments cards submitting and seeing no requests to speak from the, oh, myself, I did write a note. Can I get some clarity on the use of nurses at the various sites? Uh, because that is an important question. We know with other staff, uh, some other positions, some of them have to go to more than one campus. And so, um, just so we can be aware of what we voting on.
Ms. Dupree?
Good evening. My understanding is that this contract is for specific nurses paid through special ed. It is not one of our rotating nurses that we provide through the district. We have 17 rotating nurses and we have, we're hiring seven additional medical assistants, which are medically trained professionals to provide service throughout the district. Mr. Smith?
Pretty much what she said. No, but this particular contract is for a student that we just received, uh, who's medically fractured. And so that's why we're, uh, you're receiving this contract at this point.
Okay, so it's specific to a student?
Yes.
Not trying to address a borrowed need?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, seeing no other requests to speak, Madam, uh, Madam President, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The computer's hanging up this open now. The motion carries.
Moving forward with Item C6, Pre-K Grant, consideration of a request for the approval of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education Grant in the amount of $261,756 to provide for teacher and paraprofessional salaries and professional development. All right. Board Member Bernard. And Board Member Dyson is the second. Seeing no requests to speak from the board, public comment from the amazing James Finney.
Thank you for calling upon one of your favorite constituents. Only one of them. Um, here you have a great sounding grant to consider to receive $261,756. Seeing no budget and having seen no budget in the, um, special revenue book that you just approved, unless it's called. just approved, unless it's called something other than AG. I hope that the administration hasn't started spending any of this money and will wait to do so until it presents and gets approval for a budget. I will ask the gentleman from Maryland a rhetorical question, not expecting an answer. Do you plan to get board approval?
Be respectful on the mic, sir.
I called him a gentleman, or at least a visitor. I could have called him worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finney.
So, I would hope that before any of this money gets spent, you approve a budget without being rushed because the money has already been spent in the absence of a budget. Thank you for your time.
Seeing no other comment cards for this particular agenda item. Okay.
I'm going to write a card for every item. I'm just going to proceed with whatever.
No, you have to do one for each card. You have to do one for each card.
Oh, then I'm going to sign up on the thing. Coranda Corley, oh, I don't need to introduce myself no more. Thank you. Pre-K. We need to, we need to use funding for pre-K to be at all of our elementary schools. Right now, you have children with disabilities being bused more than thirty miles to attend another elementary school for pre-K. And that's because children with disabilities, we're not having programming for them at every elementary school. Let me give you an example. My son, Corin, autism is one of his exceptionalities. So, because we like to segregate our kids and put them in autism classrooms, which is a federal violation, he could not attend pre-K at Northeast Elementary. He had to be at South Downs, which is forty-six point, which is over forty-six miles from our home. So, having him go to South Downs, which had no problem with him attending South Downs, but why couldn't he attend at Northeast? Because Northeast don't have a classroom for pre-K students that have severe profound or autism. Now, if I was to address middle schools, it's the same way. And it's the same way for high school. But because the topic, I'm staying germane to the topic, and it's about pre-K, that is the same issue. We always discriminate against our children with disabilities based on their exceptionality and actually have them ride buses, which we lose them on or leave them on, and we blame it on the bus drivers, but it's simply because we're not actually putting together real true plans. So, how do we do this? Number one, we do not actually put, approve a grant for pre-K unless we're going to make sure that every student in every classification can actually be pleased or fulfilled by it. And right now, we're not, we're doing our children with disabilities a grave disservice and disjustice. So, how do we fix that? Number one, you really need to meet with your parents of children with disabilities because you're not meeting with us. And until you meet with us, we're going to start speaking up. And if we start having to file federal lawsuits against you individually, we will, because that's what we afforded the opportunity to do. So, I think that we should actually make every child, regardless of ability or not, regardless of race, ethnicity, regardless of their religious beliefs, a priority. So, that mean all, every single one. So, let's send this back to the drawing board. Thank you so much.
Having, uh, Miss Sister Corley, go, get your card so you can complete it. Moving forward with item C seven. Oh, God. My mind on nine o'clock so hard. Okay. Back to the board with no other requests to speak, uh, no other... Uh, yeah, it's not even seven thirty. Okay. Um... Madam Secretary, please call a vote for item C six.
Please vote. Did you refresh? Do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, please.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District three, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
District four, Vice President Collins.
Yay.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
Yes.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District nine, President Tapman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, moving forward with item C seven, professional services con, uh, professional services contract, pre-K, recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Baton Rouge Early Childhood Education Collaborative, also known as BRECEC, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to provide early childhood education strategies and support to parents and home-based caregivers. Moved by Board Member Bernard and Board Member Ware Jackson. Board Member Ware Jackson.
Just want to say that I'm so proud of the district to be a part of this. Uh, I just love this collaboration. I think my middle name should start with a C because I, I just love a collaboration. And one like this where they actually go into the homes and, um, and meet the child and the parent where they are, and then train the parents, and then offer, um, even jobs to, to parents. It's, it's just phenomenal. So, I, I can't say enough about this. I fully support it and, uh, and encourage you all to do as well, to do so as well. Thanks.
Uh, can the, can the Baton Rouge Early Childhood Education Collaborative just come give us a quick presentation of what it is you all will be doing? I think more people might be excited about it if they knew the details.
Good evening, Board Members. I'm Patricia Haynes Smith. Is that where you are right now? It's a long time ago. I'm glad I'm not there now. I'm presently serving as the Executive Director of, uh, East Baton Rouge Parish Early Childhood Education Collaborative. And, uh, what we've been able to do is to have not only collaboration with East Baton Rouge Parish, but we are getting our clients through, uh, East Baton Rouge Housing Authority. We work strictly with children who are unserved in the housing authorities. And we get them, uh, to volunteer to participate in our program. And we have ELSs, which are educational, uh, educational, early learning specialists, I'm sorry, I got education on my mind, but early learning specialists who go into not only the homes, but when we, we don't really go into the homes, we go into the communities. And those communities have per, uh, purpose, all-purpose rooms, and we're able to use those. We did try to use libraries, but, uh, transportation was a problem for many of the parents, uh, to be able to get there. So, we're back at our, um, first start of, uh, going to the all-purpose rooms. We provide the parents a model of how to teach a particular, uh, concept, and that parent then models that for the child. And the ELSs that we send there are there to help the parent and the child understand what that concept is. Uh, it's really a great program. Uh, we, we have, um, parents who are really enticed to make sure that their children get ready for kindergarten. And, uh, the, not only that, but the children are really excited. They, they would say when the folks come in, "We're going to school." Uh, so, we have a very good, uh, uh, relationship with the parents and the children. And we're also not, uh, expanding our program into the, uh, what they call FCC, Family Child Care Programs, where a provider has children in their home. And we're doing that right now, and we're also getting, uh, dollars to help us go through that too as well. So, that's just a brief concept, brief overview of what we doing, and, uh, I think we'll do another one at the board meeting if you need me. And I think Ms. Ware sent you all the video that we did with Blue Cross with Shield. They were one of our major funders, and we're looking at now asking for your support to expand this program so we can go into the provider program. Okay? Any questions?
Uh, not from me. Still on my, still have two minutes left. Uh, and so you did, you were very concise in three minutes, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. And so, seeing no other requests to speak from the board, moving forward to public comment, uh, Mr. James Finney.
Ms. Collins, while he's coming up, I want to remind those that are filling out public comment cards to fill out the forms completely, there's a signature line on the back of the card, if you don't mind signing, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no, um, comments either way on the merits of this particular project. It has to do with the funding source. On the backup that I looked at in the folder outside, it said ESER, if I'm not mistaken. When you approved a special fund book recently, there were four different ESER pots. So, just specifying that this will be paid with ESER is remarkably nonspecific. And with that in mind, I would implore you to pass it without recommendation. Let the administration fix that, and then assuming you agree that the, that the, uh, project has merits, go ahead and pass it, knowing exactly which budget of the four ESER budgets will be impacted and in what way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing now, uh, Storm Matthews, the amazing Storm Matthews.
I get to be amazing now, thank you.
Excellent, amazing. Yes.
Um, this sounds a lot like community-based school model and working when you're beginning with the young children and helping the parents at the beginning when we get them in kindergarten and then continue working with them. That's going to continue to go up as we work with them, the middle schools and the high schools and things of that nature. So, beginning at that young age, that's a really good thing. I support that. Thanks.
Thank you. And, uh, Sister Coranda Corley, and then Sister Corley, when you finish your comment, I'm going to pass your card back so it can be signed on the back.
Okay. So, as it relates to pre-K, I, I always support Ms. Ms. Smith. Anything that she do, I would support because she actually bring our kids with disabilities to the forefront, as well as our English language learners. That is a group that we have not, um, been making a priority as well. What I do ask though is about our funding sources on, um, the items that we do actually have listed on Board Docs. When we have funding sources like the one that Mr., uh, Dr. Finney brought, uh, to mind as it relates to this particular topic, it actually gives me great pause because I'm aware...
Sister Corley, can you pause our time for...
Yes, ma'am. Two, two minutes and sixteen seconds.
Just pause our time. I'm all for children, uh, a hundred percent, two hundred percent, all for children being welcome in the space. But can you just help him to lower down the volume so we can hear you well? And then we'll start your time back for you.
He, he may not keep it down long. It was at two minutes, sixteen seconds, April. I'm just going to recoup six, six seconds. But, um, I, I really think that we have to be mindful of the funding sources and make sure that we're actually, um, putting agenda items with the funding source that is in align with what the federal government was submitted by LDOE regarding how the funded, the funds will be used. As you know, Senator Bodie White brought up how EBR was using the ESER fundings during the Senate Education Committee, and he said that we were not using it in line and appropriately as it was spelled out according to the federal government. So, that was, gives me great pause because we have to make sure that it's in line. I know that Dr. Narcisse has a great relationship with Kay Brumley, just like I do, and I'm aware of all the monies that, uh, LDOE has been disseminating to our school system. But if we're not using it in line in the way that the federal government thinks that we have already outlined that we're going to use, then that is making every board member responsible for misappropriation of federal funds, and we cannot do that. So, as it relates to the program, I think that anything that Ms. Pat Smith brings up to the table as it relates to our children is wonderful, but I also think that we have to make sure that the funding source is in align with what we spelled out to the federal government. And she would be the first to tell you that that is something that we are very meticulous about, but that is something that we do not want to have anybody having to go to jail behind. So, please, 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 make sure that that's correct, and then after that, I probably wouldn't give you a problem. Thank you.
Okay, since you've still got...
Oh, I still got seconds.
I just need to, I missed, because you had mentioned to me this previously. What piece was it that Bodie, Senator Bodie White stated?
He stated that we were not using the funding correctly. So, the ESER funding and stuff that we were using towards early, um, early learning, um, as well as with pre-K, that was not correct. And he stated that on the day that the U.S. Secretary of Department of Ed actually came here to Baton Rouge. It was immediately after that meeting that he, um, made that comment at the Education Committee. He does sit on that, as well as he is the Chair for the Finance Committee. So, I do think that we need to look back at those meetings and actually possibly have a conversation with him about it.
Thank you. I just needed the first point. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Okay, back to the, okay.
I'm Caitlin Joshua, and so I just wanted to express that I'm super excited about this particular agenda item. Um, as a mom of a three-year-old spending the last year and a half or so trying to get my kid in pre-K and EBR schools, um, this is something that I really could have benefited from as a, as a parent, but also as a family. Um, and I do have to share, I do work with an organization called the Power Coalition. We've knocked on forty thousand doors in East Baton Rouge Parish this summer alone, and a lot of households, the number two answer was pre-K and early, early education in terms of needing the gaps filled. And so, something like this would really do good for families across the parish and do a better job of just removing some of those barriers and giving us more access to pre-K. So, this is awesome, and I'm excited for you guys to vote on it.
Okay. Pastor Henderson.
I rise in support of this item, but I also want to say that, uh, seeing Ms. Patricia Haynes Smith up here brings back memories because she had another program she was part of, Urban Restoration Enhancement Corporation, that provided opportunities for, uh, young'uns like me. And so, I lift up, uh, this item, uh, Ms. Pat, uh, Haynes Smith, um, Donna Collins and some others. And so, you know, one of the things I learned from that program is that some people can't be great because they want permission from people that are not great. And so, these items that are before us tonight, especially this one, this, I think this is going to be on the cusp of trying to reduce your crime, as well as growing these kids up with positive mentors. And I know if anybody can do it, um, as Dr. Narcisse says, "It takes a village to do this work," this item is really going to change, uh, communities. And so, hats off to Dr. Narcisse, Coran Smith, and the team for working with Ms. Smith on this, uh, item.
Jamie Robinson.
Um, I stand today in support of this, um, for two reasons. One, because I think it does a great job at meeting people where they are, and we have to do a better job at doing that. You know, so many of these problems that we experience today with our children's, with their behavior in school, or them falling behind academically is because they're not prepared for that classroom setting, uh, as they should be. And so, that's one reason why I support it. But the second reason is I think it gives us a really good opportunity to build and foster relationships with parents and families and, um, bring back a level of community within our community schools. So, I support this, and I ask that you all will support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment on this item. Back to the board, Board President Tapman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just want to thank former board member, former board president, former state representative, and always child advocate, uh, Patricia Haynes Smith for doing this. You, you have been a rock star. I miss you. So, we get to work together again, but thank you so much for bringing this. This is, this seems simple, but it's cutting edge. This is, this can change the game, and I have just ultimate trust in you. I know you know the community, and I know you'll get it done. So, thank you and welcome. So thank you and welcome.
Board colleague Gode.
Yes, I too would like to congratulate Ms. Smith and others for working cooperatively with the district. And also I would like to make people aware or call attention to the recent blueprint for literacy plan that was put together by the district and the mayor's office and many other community partners because all of these things dovetail into that. You know, we mentioned very succinctly in our strategic plan that reading levels at third grade is one of the key items that we need to focus on and that begins at birth, teaching children literacy. And literacy, you know, we talk about literacy coaches and everything else and people tend to equate literacy and reading. Literacy is much more than just reading. It's reading, writing, comprehension, speaking, you know, all those sorts of things. So it's way more than just phonics as you go through that. So I want to applaud that. I want to make sure that we continue working on our blueprint for literacy. I think that can become a blueprint for a much broader effort. And just if you have nothing else to do, we were at a program recently with some people from California and we were talking about this. And they mentioned that California had a very big statewide program called First Five California. I encourage you to go look that up on your computers, on your websites or whatever. There's websites. And that was a statewide effort to really begin, and it's more than just education. It's healthcare and lots of other things in the First Five California. But that was a government-agency-wide push within California and each county had their own programs and things like that. So I strongly encourage that we continue working in this area. We continue working with the help of the mayor's office and others to really push that. And I would like to see Baton Rouge become a beacon in early childhood education. And this is one of the first steps to reach that. So thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Thank you very much for all the people who've worked on that blueprint for literacy. Thank you for all of you who provide educational opportunities for all of our very young children. Thank you.
Board member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Can't say enough about former board president Pat Smith. I so appreciate this effort and I really would like to see this move forward just as squeaky clean as possible. And there is a question around which pot of money in the Essar funds this is coming from. So I'm asking Mr. Super, Dr. Narcisse, if we could have someone from finance, I'm sure they, they could tell us which, which pot of Essar money funds that this would come from, please.
Dr. Beth, would you be able to-
Thank you, Dr. Beth.
Hi. It's Essar two, action two.
If we could put that specifically in the, in the backup, so when it moves forward, it'll be perfectly clear, that would be phenomenal. Can we do that? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. And I do, I, I had, I know we're trying to address our teacher shortage. And so then with that blueprint for literacy, how is the blueprint for literacy going to be impacted by our need to shift some literacy coaches back to the classroom?
The, the blueprint for literacy are, they have multiple components around strategies. It doesn't talk about personnel shifts, but let me, Dr. Lashley, are you here? And just for clarity, Vice President Collins, I just want to make sure I answer your, we answer your question. Are you asking how we're using literacy coaches to help with the literacy blueprint?
Well, I mean, I guess the answer is, you know, F. And, you know, I've said at last board meeting, so I, I get that we don't have enough teachers in a classroom. And so we had to pull, you know, we had some folks on a district level or where have you. And we said, you know, we need you in the classroom. I mean, the classroom come first. And so I was just curi-, I, I just wanted to get an understanding because I had looked at the literacy, the blueprint for literacy document. I do agree it's amazing and that it also contributes to the outcomes of the pre-K services. And so then I wanted to gain an understanding of, you know, how much of an impact that loss of staff in that department, for good reason, might have on the blueprint for literacy.
So in terms of our, our growth that we have in the literacy space, even as you can see some of our data, the reason that the literacy scores have, we believe have gotten better is because coaches have been able to support teachers. The, the way that literacy coaches are actually used, or math coaches, those, it's actually helped with professional development for teachers and planning or, you know, doing those things. And so that's why even in our current approach, even when we had to put literacy coaches back into the classroom, we had them teach one or two class and still coach to support or, or do the demonstration classes, which they could do now with some of their teacher, with their students to show teachers how to do work. So we've been trying to make sure that we can not dilute the, the coaching approach, but it's still, there, the, it's still, it's still, we just, it's the challenge right now until we can get those vacancies in, we just have to kind of modify a little bit for that. I don't know if I'm answering your question correctly.
No, yeah. And that does sound like I could see that, I can logistically see that being accomplished with them doing more than one class, or excuse me, doing a class, but then still being able to assist with coaching-type things on the middle school and high school level. I struggle with that on like an elementary school level. Although a couple of elementary schools do actually change classes depending on how their principal, but most don't. And so then I'm not sure if that will impact the elementary school level.
Yeah. And so even today, it's a very great question. Even though today when we met with the coaches, we actually had the elementary team, when we told them they were going to go back to help us problem solve that, because usually at the elementary level, you know, you have one teacher that's there the entire day. So we've been kind of working through some strategies around that on how they can be able to figure that out. So that, that is a challenge we've been problem solving. And also in terms of the vacancies, not all of the coaches were, will be going in because it's based on their certification as well. As you know, we still have to follow federal guidelines and those things. So if they are in, they're, they have certifications in ELA for elementary, then, you know, they, they can fit that. But if they're in the secondary, they cannot. So we've had to work through that. So there will still be a set of coaches that we will be to work through. The, the work that Dr. Lashley and her team will have to do is for those who teach a class and also coaching, we'll just have to figure out how we work with their time on letting them support teachers in a very different way. But there's also opportunity to that they can teach classes and demonstrate this is how, you know, a model classroom can look to help support. So there's a lot of modification they can also do.
Okay. And on my last 18 seconds, those that, and we got to fill classroom vacancies first. So those that did have to go ahead and go back to the classroom, and I know they're amazing, but there is a huge pay difference and we asking them to fulfill some of the same need. I would just like to raise up the, raise that up and maybe with some of the, a small bit of the Essar funds, we can find a way to incentivize them to still function in their capacity in some way on those campuses.
Yeah, we, we can look into a lot of, we had a conversation today. You know, I, we, we have school on Monday, so we had to make some immediate decisions. So we, we, there's a lot of things we're looking into.
Okay. Thank you very much. And seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote.
Now moving forward with item C8, professional services contracts, federal. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the professional services contracts between East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. And the following, A, Center for High School Success in the amount of $306,705 to provide training, support, and resources. Source Essar three, incentive. Item B, Lexia Learning Systems LLC in the amount of $302,847 to provide literacy, professional learning, funding source, okay, I'm sorry, literary, literary, excuse me, literacy foundation training. C, Dream Box in the amount of $682,212 to provide a mathematics program, strategic alignment, student achievement Essar three, action two. Near Pod, item D is Near Pod in the amount of $193,027.99 to provide an interactive digital platform, funding source Essar three, action two. Avid Center in the amount of $153,196 to provide IGP support and professional learning, funding source redesign, and Studyville in the amount of $78,000 to provide tutoring services to specified schools. Funding source Essar three, action two. Can I get a motion? Board member Howard and board member Bernard. Seeing no requests to speak from the board. We have Mr. James Finney from the public.
I really wish you would consider each of these six items separately, but I'll cram all my comments into a minute or two anyway. The first four may be lovely, maybe not. It's what, a million and a half dollars? Poof, gone? I really hope those are well-chosen projects. Item number five may be perfectly reasonable and I'm sure it's accidental, but it says redesign here and in the budget book it says Essar redesign. And you shouldn't make it that hard for the public to figure out what the budget is. And then finally, the main reason I wish you would bifurcate these into six items is so that you can seriously consider voting against the contract with Studyville. I'm not sure that those relatively privileged schools necessarily need to provide their students private tutoring at the expense of other things that you might use the money for, like giving more money to paraprofessionals who are poorly paid that might be able to provide some tutoring or paying extra money to teachers to work a little bit of, off the, off the school day time to make some more money. And I'm pretty concerned with where you chose to spend that money. Those magnet school kids probably don't need the tutoring quite as much as some of the kids in the neighborhood schools, particularly farther north. Thanks for your time.
Seeing no other public comment. Back to the board. The Dream Box one, is, is that an expansion or is that equivalent to a renewal?
Dr. Robinson, could you come up for Mr. Robert Schofer, please?
From previous?
Last year. Yes ma'am.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure I recall that correctly. And then Superintendent, go ahead. And I know when Studyville, I, I did approve Studyville last time. It's a nice facility. I don't know that I necessarily feel like it's the best approach in addressing needs for tutoring. Like a lot of principals understand what they need on their campuses and could be better, could be supported better by helping them to do the tutoring, their targeted tutoring on their campuses. But that being said, I rolled with it because it was a diverse mix of schools. Help us understand what went into the decision to do these sets of schools versus the ones last time. And we have a lot of schools, so we can spread the wealth, but what went into choosing these particular ones? Okay, there you go.
Can you? Okay, some of the schools do not receive Title I funding and some of the schools, for example, like Liberty High, it's not as much as other schools. So that was part of the decision because the principals expressed the needs for their students need tutoring as well. So that's why these schools were selected.
Okay.
Vice President, I've got just one more thing. I know we, we say this a lot, but we would, we would say that all children in our school system need tutoring. We may, I know that families and children come with various sets of needs, but I think sometimes, you know, we are, we're trying our best to make sure that we can provide different needs to different students. And so I, I just want to caution us all the time because sometimes I've, not from the board, but sometimes I hear, we always say, well, this group needs this and this group needs that. I just want everybody, all the students need tutoring help and because all the students are trying to accelerate and do their work. And so what we are trying to do is, Dr. Bethley's showing is, you know, we're trying to strategically allocate funds to schools where they may not be able to have some of that funding to do that work. Some of our schools where they have high needs because we are able to move dollars with their title or we're able to, we usually get a lot of funds for students that are coming with challenges. The schools that get left out are schools that they may say A on them, but the reality is when you look at all the kids, all the kids need growth. And so we're trying to move to a system where we can continue to grow kids all across. And so I only share that because I, we're hopeful that as we're making these decisions, families in, in our communities understand that no matter where the students live, whether they're in North Baton Rouge, Mid-City, or South Baton Rouge, that we're trying to elevate them as a community and also help all kids accelerate. Even our most top-performing child, if they're taking calculus AB or high-performing dual enrollment math or whatever course that they're taking, they need support. So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah. So I don't agree, excuse me, I don't disagree with that point at all. I'm not going to make quite a big deal of it this time. I won't be here the next time it come up, but I think, I truly do think that the better use of money to support tutoring at schools is to put it in the power of those principals that know how to give targeted tutoring needs for their students on their site because they know what their students need. The Studyville model only provides, unless they've made adjustments from the time we visited, they only provide like interns or, you know, they just provide somebody, they come in and they say, what you, what would you like to do today? You know? And that's fine if a student is not really needing strong support, but even students at Liberty High or Glasgow, et cetera, need, some of them do need strong support and they could be best supported by tutoring that's directed by their own school site. So I just would like to lift that up as something to consider moving forward. And okay, I apologize for that. You could have did a little buzzer. Board member- Uh, Board Member Ware Jackson.
Hang on, uh, Dr. Beverly. Uh, I appreciate the, the remarks around, you know, A schools and D schools. Just because a school is an A school doesn't mean every student there is an A student. And just because a school is a D school doesn't mean that every student there is a D school. We have excellence in all of the schools, um, at some level or, or another. So, you know, I agree that we need tutoring across the board, because, you know, children are very, we need to be very specific in reaching our kids. So I'm wondering if, um, how can you, can you speak to the level of tutoring that we have in those schools that we know, like, you know, like the C D and, and F schools, um, other than Title I? Because I know we don't always use Title I funding just, just for tutoring.
Yeah, so, so school leaders try their best to use various dollars to try to get tutoring. And we also, um, we work, as you know, we have multiple partners throughout the parish. Um, some partners have stronger relationships, depending on where the school is located, who's there. Even there, sometimes some schools are using faith-based partners to help with tutoring. And so, um, uh, there's a lot of different ways they choose. Uh, what we are clear about though, is there's not enough tutoring happening across schools. Um, so, um, the challenge, uh, that we've been, we were trying to solve, um, was for schools that, um, um, that didn't have the dollars to be able to allocate, or some of those, we can try to stopgap that. We had it our way, we'd have tutoring for every single child. But as you know, we're, we have to look at variations of how we use different dollars, whether that's our federal dollars, and it's not just ESA, it could be Title I dollars, federal, you know, anything that falls in the various federal categories to do that, um, so it doesn't, um, hurt our own budget.
So are all of our D D and F schools covered with tutoring resources?
Yes, ma'am, they have a combination of, um, ESA, um, Title I, and direct student services.
That's great, okay. Thank you very much.
Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with, with item C nine, Professional Services Contract Career Development, the recommended action is consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between EBR Parish School Board and Define Learning in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred dollars to provide a digital work-based learning platform that supports student career exploration, lessons, activities, and experience reflections in grades four through twelve. Board Member Dyson and, and Board Member, Board President Tattman. Um, can I get somebody to explain to me the difference between this and Canvas?
Sneakness.
Sure, uh, good evening, uh, President Tattman, Vice President Collins, members of the board, and Dr. Narcisse. Um, what we're looking at on this item is defined careers. And it's a program that we're looking at purchasing through our career development funds that will allow students to, uh, basically explore their careers by using a platform, and then log that information. And then over time, counselors and teachers can see not only what students were personally interested in, but also what we're kind of assigning them to do as they have a rotation of careers to look at each, uh, year. So our goal was to be intentional, make sure students had access to see what type of careers they might be interested in, and that lets us, uh, better, uh, pick a pathway.
And I apologize, um, my mind went to Canvas with, and I actually went to this website. Thank you for answering my question, for the, for the sake of the viewing parties. And, uh, moving forward to public
Sure.
comment, thank you, sir. Uh, Dr. James Finney.
So I'm a little confused, because the agenda item refers to a career development fund, and that, those are the three words I just heard Mr. Neekes mention. The closest I could come to finding a budget for that is a career and technical education program. Now, maybe that's the same thing, maybe it isn't. The public shouldn't have to guess. But let's pretend for the sake of discussion, unless somebody corrects me in next two minutes and thirty-two seconds, that I found the right fund in the special budget book. But, you know, there are a lot, there's a lot of money in here for salaries, and I don't see anywhere that you would fit this one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar one hundred software expense, unless that's the supply. So maybe it's not an issue. Maybe you don't care, once you pass the budget, you get to spend money, however. I'm not sure that this is budgeted. Words matter, if you mean one thing, you should say one thing, if you mean something else, say something else. Clarity is important. This is a, what, three-quarters of a billion-dollar-a-year organization? A certain level of excellence should be common. It, it shouldn't be outrageous for the public to demand that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, uh, and Coranda Corley.
Thank you so much, um, I am against this. So I had the pleasure of reading this, um, debacle, and it was not something that I really enjoyed reading. Because, one, it does not say how it would benefit children in grades four through eighth. So this career development is for career, for kids, grades four through twelve. When did we start having children in fourth grade start saying, hey, I know exactly what I plan on majoring in in college? I know many individuals in college that actually changes their major more than once. So when we talk about career development, how exactly is this program supposed to actually influence fourth graders through eighth graders as it relates to career development? It talks about the many different pathways, that's over like four hundred fifty careers for them to actually look at. That, it doesn't explain that neither. In addition to that, how is this gonna work for a child that may be in fourth grade that have a visual impairment, such as cortical visual impairment? We do have many students in our school system that have CVI, TVI, and we're not able, they're not gonna be able to utilize this program. Let's talk about children, other children with disabilities, such, such as a child that may be severe profound. Are we supposed to be billing for them to use this too, i- if they're not actually using any type of electronic device? This is not something that is prudent or wise for us to actually use our money on. I remember when we was in school here in East Baton Rouge Parish School System, we used to do paperwork with the staff to actually see how, how we learn, and actually see what, um, what could be put in place according to how we learn, if you have visual auditory learning. But also, we had Career Day, where we had people from different professions to actually come and speak to children, and actually help influence and develop their minds on a career path to actually choose. In addition to that, you had programs like one that Representative Smith did called the, uh, the YMCA Black Achievers, that actually also allowed people that worked in many different genres to actually tell, uh, work with students about the, in, uh, about how they work and what they do on an everyday basis. So when we talk about having career development, one, is this money gonna be, uh, taken away funding that could actually go to C-Tech? Is this gonna take away funding that could actually go towards making sure that each school have a nurse for eight hours a day? Is this taking away money that could be actually reaching our children in a classroom to address issues such as math, literacy, et cetera? So when we talk about programs like this, this does not make sense, because this is something that we can actually do, teachers every day can do this and have been doing it. It's a waste of money, thank you.
Thank you, seeing no other, um, requests from the public. Board Member Dyson.
Yes, I am, uh, really excited to see this. The, uh, one thing that I've heard for many, many years, and experienced with my own, is that, um, you know, there, there isn't enough exposure to what the possibilities are for careers. And I think that, yes, it'll be age-appropriate and grade-appropriate, but it's, it's really good to be starting their minds thinking about what all the options are, and offering them, our students, exposure to, oh, this, this need is there, the demand for jobs is here, and I have an interest in this, and how can that be used together to ensure that, once I do, um, graduate, or get, become certified, or whatever the path is, um, that there's a, a job to do in it, in something that they can enjoy doing, and they have an interest in. And I think earlier identification of, or an exploration of these concepts about demand, supply and demand, and, um, uh, career opportunities, um, is gonna provide great service for our students going forward. I know it's a little bit more difficult when you get into college and you have not really, you have no earthly idea what you want to do. And I, and I've heard that so many times, and, uh, experienced it firsthand. So I appreciate this item, and I definitely support it, thank you.
Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C ten, Memorandum of Understanding, uh, Louisiana State University. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of an MOU between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Louisiana State University School of Social Work to provide practical experience in the field of school social work under the supervision and direction of a licensed clinical social worker. Can I get a motion? Board Member Dyson and Board Member Ware Jackson. Seeing no requests to speak from the board. And the, oh, and seeing a request to speak from Sister Coranda Corley from the public.
Good afternoon, so I am speaking against this memorandum of understanding regarding LSU and social workers, because social workers is not the only thing that we need. Um, one, we don't have a itemized, uh, detailed expenditure report on how much money we're actually giving to LSU. I'm sure that we, there's other universities, um, in this state that we can do a, a collaboration with, in regards to not just social workers, but psychologists. We don't have psychologists, every school is supposed to have a clinical psych- psychologist under federal law. That's not happening. We need to look at all of the things that we're legally required to have. And giving a large sum of money to one in, one institution, just because this is a position we think we're legally required to have, does not mean that that's something we're legally required to have. We are legally required to have, uh, psychologists, but we don't have them. That's something that we need to look at. A psychologist reaches far, far more, is, it reaches far beyond what a social worker can actually do. And I'm asking that we look at that. In addition to that, what about doing a memorandum of understanding with Southern University and their nursing school? What about doing a, a memorandum of understanding with Nickel State and their nursing school, Magnes? I mean, there's so many, um, collaborations that I can think of for positions that we don't have, that we actually need to be looking at trying to fulfill. But social workers is not one that we really have a, a real big thing on. Social workers are limited on what they can do. We don't have enough registered dieticians. Dr. Nadine Mann can actually tell you that. We actually are supposed to have that. We, we need to look at what we're legally supposed to have, and actually make sure we have that. And also, in addition to that, we need to take into consideration when Amazon opened, and it's paying people fifteen dollars an hour, and benefits on the very first day, how is that gonna impact us? Thank you.
Seeing no other, um, public comment, calls, back to the board. Uh, Board Member Golday.
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Vice President. Sir, I'm seeing, uh, as General Counsel, reading through this contract, this is just setting the terms for the student interns and things to come onto our facilities. This has no payment involved whatsoever, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
So I just want the public to understand that the previous speaker was totally mistaken, that, that this is not gonna be an expenditure of funds. This is free to the school district, and free to the students that they work with. And this is really an educational opportunity for the LSE students, uh, and added benefit to our students, is that correct?
That's correct, Ms. Golday.
Thank you very much, sir.
Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C eleven, Memorandum of Understanding, Southern University Dual Enrollment. Recommended action, a consideration of a request for the approval of an MOU between East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Southern University to provide dual enrollment courses for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Can I get, okay, Board Member Howard and Board President Tattman. Seeing no requests to speak from the board, public comment. Oh, how did I, okay, I got, okay. Coranda Corley from the pu- from the public. And then following, uh, Sister Coranda Corley, we have Sister Storm Matthews. And then following Sister Storm Matthews, we have Pastor Henderson.
I'm actually in support of this one. And I'm in support of this one, because this actual memorandum of understanding put everything on EBR school system. That's on the first page, just in case you didn't read it. Everything is on EBR, accommodations, modifications, all that is on EBR. They also talk about having a committee that I would greatly appreciate being a part of, on behalf of individuals with disabilities. Because this is about dual enrollment, and our children with disabilities are supposed to be able to attend any dual enrollment class or anything that you offer to regular education students. And as of right now, that has not been something that has occurred. I'm quite sure Montreal will actually talks, uh, talk on behalf of an individual with a disability about how he wasn't afforded that either, when he was in this school system. We have to make sure our children with disabilities are put to the forefront. And our children with disabilities are supposed to be afforded opportunities as, such as college. The bill passed, and is now law, for more funding to go toward Southern University and other institutions that are part of LA PI, which is secondary institutions for, um, education for students with disability. So, yes, you have to have some parents of children with disabilities on this committee that will be convening more than that will be convening more than twice, uh, twice a semester because you're going to be entitled to provide accommodations and ma- and modifications. So that mean if Ms. Matthews' children would like to attend Southern University dual enrollment classes, EBR has to provide those accommodations and modifications. I think the first problem is going to be that our school system don't know that when those children en- enroll into dual enrollment, they would then fall upon the 504 Rehabilitation Act. So these kids that have IEPs will also have to have 504 plans. So your ESS department, Dr. Harris and Mr. Coates, our two directors, will be working tirelessly around the clock, and you cannot have them work for free because then we would be violating EEOC. And right now, they're currently working more than five days a week, eight hours a day. So I'm asking that we do approve this, but you also, if you approve it, you actually have to make sure that you have parents like me as a part of that committee. Thank you so much, and I look forward to how this is gonna file out, fall out in, uh, lit- litigation. Thank you.
Sister Coylee.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Um, and this is a matter of, uh, running a meeting. Does your baby's disability impact his ability to do headphones?
Yes, ma'am, it does. Um, his, his disability actually impacts him because he has sensory overload. So sometimes the lighting in the, uh, in the room actually will impact him also. Um, in his classroom, we do have filters that cover some of the light and...
All right. I was just trying to find so- some, uh, common way that you, as a parent of a child with a disability can fully participate, but then he would not be, not be a distraction to your comments.
Yes, ma'am. If I can give a recommendation, my recommendation would be that you actually give us parents of children with disabilities an actual room that would allow, um, staff. We can pay, I know we don't pay our chi- our, uh, paraprofessionals a lot, maybe we can get them and some of the medical staff to actually be in the room with those ch- with our kids so that they can actually do what kids do, but we could actually come and be meaningful.
What I'll do is, um, I, I'll take it upon myself to do some research about what some school districts and other areas might do for childcare in general and including that, so.
Yes, ma'am, and in, if I...
But that's it, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, the NBA and NFL, they do the sensory rooms too.
Thank you, okay.
So I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward with, uh, yes.
Um, reading the MOU, I really like it. I like the standards in it. It's for 11th and 12th grade, but if you have a younger child who really proves themself, the university will make an exception. So if you have a child who is ready that is younger, they will make that exception, not throwing a child to the wolves. Um, they must maintain a certain GPA to stay in the program. Um, while taking dual enrollment, uh, they do not allow them to fall behind. If they fall a lot, fall behind, they do not allow them to keep going. They have laid out something that keeps them thriving. If they fall behind, they're like, nope, baby, this ain't, this ain't for you. Keep, get your stuff together and then you can come back. I really like that. The one thing I don't like about this, this is not going to be approved until the end of August. This is for this school year. Why was this not done in July? That's out of order, because this is for this, this school year, 2223. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Pastor Henderson, yes, sir.
Dr. Collins, uh, members of the board, I actually speak in favor of this item. And to respond, uh, you know, I was one of those children who struggled with reading from the time when I was in elementary school, response to Ms. Coylee. And Angela Reams taught me to put me on a track to be, uh, a successful reader. But one of the things my mother taught me before I left home to go to school was that you can't put a crown on a clown and expect a king. And so I knew that I had to go, uh, to class and actually be a responsible young man. And so I want to leave this, it's, you know, it's paramount to the partnerships, it says. I woke myself up because we ain't got an alarm clock. Dug in the dirt, closed basket, because ain't nobody wait, nobody washed my uniform. Brushed my hair and teeth in the dark, because the lights aren't on. Even got my baby sister ready, because my mama wasn't home. Got both of us to school on time to eat us a good breakfast. Then when I got to class, the teacher fussed because I ain't got a pencil. So I do think that some of the things that we are doing, I do think is putting us forward. And so I, I'm, you know, I have no qualms in saying I was a student with a, a minor disability, but it took people like Angela Reams, uh, to help me move that forward. Um, and so, and there were capacities that Board Member Dyson served in that helped parents, uh, with disabilities. And so I'm, I'm thankful, you know, for this school system, you know, for the work that's, uh, being provided for children with disabilities, especially in, you know, in the area of reading. So I, I can't speak for nobody else. I can only speak for me that this school system, it worked for me.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment cards and seeing no other requests to speak, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. None of y'all are open? The motion carries.
Moving forward with Item 12. Policy Revision, the recommended action is a consideration of a request for the approval of the revised policy, GBRIBC COVID-19 Emergency Leave. I have a first from Board Member Bernard, and I, can I get a second? From Board President Tatman. Uh, Board Member Bernard.
Superintendent Narcisse, I have a question, and I don't know who best to direct my question to, um, can we use the at-home tests if it is uploaded into an app or to a state portal or something like that? I know that all of the apps have a, I mean, all, all of the, the at-home tests have an app that you can use for that. So that is my question. Can we use that as proof of testing? And the reason I'm asking that is my sister recently had COVID despite being vaccinated and boosted and all that multiple times, and having had COVID previously as well, but she had it again, and her, she called her doctor's office and said, can I come in and see you? And they said, no, ma'am, you cannot. She had the at-home test. So, uh, my point is that the doctor's offices do not come to the doc, they don't, won't let you come to the hospital, they won't, can't come. So how does a teacher provide proof, or anyone, any staff member, provide proof that they are positive for COVID? Or can, can you just go over that? And is that an acceptable proof? The at-home test, I know, um, you know, I've used those a couple of times. I didn't upload it into the app, I just read it myself and looked at it and said, okay, good deal. Thank you.
We did not accept the at-home test. I've just spoke to, um, Ms. Hall, and we will work to see what we can do because there have been many advances in the last year.
Yep, so just my question, you know, and I'm not suggesting that somebody use, takes a picture of their test and uses that as proof, but maybe there is a way through a portal, through the DHH, or some other way that they can verify, because I don't want them to go to the doctor either if they're, uh, if they need to stay at home, you know what I'm saying? So, so could y'all just check into that and for the ne- in the next, you know, we have another little bit of time before we actually pass the item? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
And Board Colleague Ware Jackson.
Uh, Dr. Narcisse, in looking at something from the, uh, Louisiana Department of Health, uh, we're seeing that there's nearly 800, uh, people in the state that have had like two separate infections within a 90-day period. So, you know, I'm wondering, because we have only one allowance for an employee themselves to, um, to have COVID leave, leave, and, um, two for employees that, uh, instead of, I'm sorry, two in, for in case there's a child or, you know, something like that, that's something, uh, in case there's a child that's infected or they've had some kind of contact or whatever. Can we consider more than one, at least two for, uh, employees with, uh, s- since we see that this virus is something new that is, is hitting people more than once and in a, in a short window of time? I think it would be a, a really good use of S or funds, especially since it's nicknamed COVID funds.
Um, yeah, I mean, we, we can look into any possibility. I think, uh, right now, we've been working closely with Department of Health and also others to get us to figure out the best direction, but we can look into it.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's look into that and see what we can do.
Seeing no other requests to speak, and I just want to say, uh, I echo that sentiment. Uh, I would like to see more than one with this last strand being something that people get reinfected from. I, it's just realistic for people to need more than one. Uh, but seeing no other requests to speak from the board, public comment from Storm Matthews, Fairleigh Jackson, and then Caleb Holmes.
This new strand, or, no, excuse me, variant, sorry. This new variant, um, is very different than what we have dealt with before. The other ones have given you some sort of immunity. This one, it doesn't care if you're masked, it doesn't care if you are vaccinated. Don't get me wrong, I'm not taking this N95 or the surgical off, and I have had four shots. So, um, but I still don't let people come anywhere near me. Um, but if we are going to be in person, which we should be, that's the world that we live in now, but if we are going to be in person, um, and I saw the, uh, the LDH news article that I think, um, Ms. Ware Jackson was referring to last Friday, they said 784, um, as of last Friday, so maybe it's gone up. 784 people had had two separate instances of COVID in a 90-day period. Not, it wasn't rebound like what the president had where he just tested negative one day and then had it again. It was two separate infections of COVID. Um, we need to be able to have this COVID leave anytime someone tests positive, after they have recovered, if they get it a second time or whatever, if we end with the children. I am most concerned about our bus drivers, who are basically in a capsule of a Petri dish with 60 kids, um, our pre-K teachers in Paris, our kindergarten teachers in Paris, and our special education teachers in Paris, with those populations of children who like to put their hands in their noses and their mouths and then tap you a lot. Um, if you understand that population of children. Um, I mean, all of us, you know, as we are in, in the school with close proximity to children and other, um, humans, but we desperately need more because people have gotten it numerous, numerous, numerous times. I know that the five days, we don't really like, but CDC changed that. Um, we had somebody that just came back to school after five days, and clearly their COVID isn't over, and they needed more time, but thank you.
Um, Fairleigh Jackson, District 5. Um, first, I'd, I'd really like to commend the administration on the handling of COVID thus far. Um, I think, I know I personally have been very happy with the way that you all have protected our students and our kids and, and the staff, and, you know, Dr. Narcisse, you and I connected a couple of times on federal issues and things like that. Um, so I want to encourage you all to keep doing that. Um, I, I want to echo, um, first what Board Member Bernard said, that the opportunity for testing not just being a PCR test or a laboratory test, when you're only given five days, you may lose two of those five days waiting on the results of that test. So I, I really support what, uh, Ms. Bernard has said about at-home tests and trying to think about how that could be an option. Um, second, I'd like to reiterate what other board members have said about the five days, the one-time five days. As we all know, as has already been discussed, we can be infected more than once. My daughter, my seven-year-old daughter, who is healthy and wonderful, has had COVID twice within one year. Um, and I, I think it's important for us to realize that, that's reality. Uh, we're also talking a lot about retention of teachers, and sorry, I'm talking about COVID and I didn't mean to bump the mic. But when we're talking about retention, I, I mean, we can offer stipends, we can do all of that, but we need to support our teachers where they are, and they're coming into this school year. They, they need to know that we support them, that if they get COVID twice, they're not gonna have to use their sick leave, you know, i- if they've got to take care of kids. I mean, I, I just think this has to be a real look at the humanity side of this. And so I, I really, I don't think there should even be a limit. If you test positive for COVID, you're a team member, and this goes across the board, not just teachers, but bus drivers, everyone. You should, you should get that time off to recover, and then you should get it again if you get reinfected. So I really hope you'll take a moment to revisit this. I don't know why we're looking at this two days, business days till school starts. Um, but anyway, you have until the next board meeting to hopefully hone this in. So thank you. Support our teachers, support our kids, keep everybody safe, every student, every day.
Thank you, Nix.
Good, good evening, Board Members. Um, mainly this is a concern for safety, um, when it comes to our teachers. Uh, obviously, I think it would be in the best interest of safety for parents, students, and teachers, that we amend this policy to include multiple instances. Uh, like some of the people who've already come up here and spoken, I can, you know, put it out there, I got COVID, COVID twice, um, and had all of my shots and everything. So it is, uh, this variant of the, uh, of COVID is highly transmissible. Thankfully, it's not as deadly, but it is highly transmissible. We don't want people going around and infecting others. So I do think it is beneficial that we amend this policy to include multiple instances, uh, for teachers to, uh, take off for COVID leave without using their days. Also, one of the things that a lot of teachers have brought up is the cost. Um, as you know, there are the at-home tests, and, uh, some of us in society somehow cannot complete the COVID tests, uh, because you can get false positive or negatives results. So we want to encourage that teachers or staff are getting the proper tests, but also without increased cost to them, so promoting that they're going to the free testing sites so that way it can be administered by a professional without, um, having to add cost to them, because in some places, it could be a $60 copay. And teachers and staff know, especially when you're buying supplies and doing everything else on teacher salaries, those $60 is gonna add up. And with a, with a variant that is as transmissible as this, we don't need to add an extra cost. So, uh, we support this policy, however, amending it to include extra instances for teachers, for students, and for everyone's safety and health. Thank you.
Nix, thank you, Nix, which is, uh, Dr. James Finney.
Thank you. I'm going to assume that the motion on the floor is to approve the text of the policy as provided in the backup and to put it on the consent agenda. I would suggest strongly, based on at least two themes that we've clearly heard, both from the board and from the audience, that there needs to be the consideration of at-home tests and also multiple occasions of the five days being required. I would encourage you to advance this to the full board meeting separate from the consent agenda, so those tweaks can be made, and then you can approve a truly strong policy, because I would hope that if it goes on the consent agenda, it's not with a modified text, because I don't think that's what you're supposed to do with the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Felicia Johnson.
Good evening. Um, I concur with the last two, uh, speakers.
I concur with the last two speakers. Last year, we had instances where, uh, teachers were infected or their children were, uh, infected, and they had multiple instances where they had to be out. And with the, only the five days, it presented problems where they exhausted all of their, uh, leave, and when they had to make doctor's appointments or whatever, it, they couldn't do that because they were sick with COVID. And since the new variant is, the people are getting reinfected, we know that we're going to have that at schools during the, the last two days of training. We had people who had COVID. So it's already starting. So we need to make sure that we cover our employees and show them that we respect them, we care about them, we care about their well-being, because the last thing we want them to do is to come to work, um, sick, because that ends badly. It exacerbates the problem, and we just can't have that. So make sure that everyone is safe. Let's put this safety, safety first again, uh, because COVID is here, and now we got monkey, monkeypox. So let's make sure that we're doing what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Karonda Corlin. That's, that's, she changed her, uh, the writing of her name each time, it looks a little bit different. She's an artist at work.
I'm practicing that signature for med school. I actually think that we have, um, that it's really sad that we're putting things that was gonna, that's gonna impact staff within the next couple of days. Schools start on Monday, and right now, I don't know if you're paying attention to how he's reacting, but that, he acts a lot worse than this, uh, on, in a medical setting, if it requires him to be restrained in order for testing. So testing as it relates for COVID is extremely hard when it comes to our children with disabilities. So when we think about a policy for our staff, we also have staff that have disabilities. Now, many of our, uh, all of our staff are verbal, but what if we have staff that have challenges with, uh, communication, and it takes them a long time to communicate? Or they're not really in tune to the actual symptoms of this new variant of the COVID-19 virus? We're not taking that into consideration when we're creating these policies. I'm gonna speak up because he's turning up the tablet, not hollering. But we're not taking that into consideration. We're not taking into consideration how every staff, starting with bus drivers, then cafeteria workers, because that's who meet our kids next, the bus drivers, paraprofessionals, then the cafeteria workers to give them breakfast. We're not taking into consideration that we have nothing in place for them. The, those are the people that we keep at the bottom of the totem pole, and I'm sorry that Mr. Lanis is not here to speak on that, since he liked to speak up for our cafeteria workers. We need our cafeteria workers and bus drivers to have those protections. We saw recently, when our bus driver was attacked by a student, we went after the bus driver, not the student. We didn't provide that student the support. So I'm asking that we actually bring the staff to the table to actually help with creating this policy. It would have been very effective if we could have had them before today to actually be able to talk about a policy that's going to impact them, especially with leave as it requires to medical. But we also need to talk about paying them if they have to take an extended leave from complications of this pandemic, from the virus. So I think that you need to have these, uh, unions at the table, that's the association and the federation, and have parents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other cards for a public comment, or, and then board, uh, member Goday.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Vice President. Uh, just a couple of quick points. One, I'd like to point out to the public that the only changes in the proposed, uh, COVID leave policy from last year is just a change in the dates. And so I fully respect people coming up and say, we need to think about changing and adding on multiple times to that, and I fully appreciate that. But this is not a new policy, this is not something that's being, uh, written in for the first time or anyone seeing it. All this is doing is really changing the dates from 2021 to 2023, or 2022 to 2023. So, um, this is not a major revision, this is just a rollover of a current policy, but I do agree, we need to look at maybe some changes in the thing. Uh, I would ask Ms. Dupree in the back here, if you could come up. Uh, and my question is, you know, we had a pretty robust, uh, testing regime, uh, in the schools and things for, uh, families and, or for students and teachers, uh, and I don't know where that system lies, because one of my concerns, and, and I, I can go with the home test, but one of my concerns is, I've read a lot about false positives in the home test. So could you just explain, as we go into the school year, what will be the testing program that the school board was sponsoring at no cost to faculty and students, uh, and staff and students, not just faculty, staff and students, uh, when school begins? I, I just don't know what that process is.
So we have, um, shared with staff, and we are pushing out through the schools to parents, the COVID guidance and registration form. Any parent can voluntarily sign their child up. Every EBR employee is required to sign up because we test every week at every site, and it rotates. Usually, if you test, always, if you test, you have your results before the next morning, and it's all free, and they will be providing incentives. LDH will be providing incentives again this year, more information will be coming.
Okay. And then my question is, uh, say your school does that test on Wednesday, or pick a day, on Wednesday, and on Friday, you feel ill. What do you do then?
So we also have the schedule provided on the district website, so an employee can go to one of those other sites to, and check to make sure when they're coming and test there, or they can go to one of our health centers and school clinics, which we, um, work with, Our Lady of the Lake, and they can be tested there. In addition to that, we provide all the information for free clinics to our employees.
Okay. So there are a lot of options other than a home test available, uh, to all employees?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, board colleague Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Dr. Narcissus, as we look at this, uh, over the course of a couple of weeks, uh, would we also take a look at, uh, with the terminology and definitions, where we, uh, consider the childcare provider a paid, um, there's, you, we'll need documentation from a paid childcare provider. However, many of our families have grandparents that are providing care for their children at no cost, and, um, so we need to consider how they are to get whatever, if they need certain documents, I mean, that's not a, they don't have a paid childcare provider. They're, uh, if the parent or, or, I'm sorry, the grandparent is providing, um, childcare for the, the sick child and, you know, so we need to also look at that element, you know, because we're just considering pa- paid childcare, that could be problematic for a number of, um, of families. So, um, I would ask that we move this item forward as a standalone item, so if there are any changes that are going to be made, things that we want to consider, uh, we'll have time to do that, and then at the full board meeting, then vote on it.
So Ms. Ware Jackson, you, you could make a substitute motion to do that, or you can ask the makers of the motion to make a friendly amendment to do so? What is your preference?
Either, uh, friendly amendment would be fine.
The second to the amendment has stepped away, so then you would need to do.
Let's do the substitution.
Substitute motion, okay.
Okay. And, uh.
We need a second for the substitute motion, Ms. Commons, but, uh, Vice President Commons.
I, I'll do this.
As the chair, I recommend someone else, since you're chair in the meeting, um, someone else should probably make the second.
Okay, so then the sub fails for lack of a second. Okay. Did you have anything else? You, you still have two minutes.
Well, I tried, y'all.
Okay.
Trying to give you time.
I have two, oh, well, actually, I have one question, because board, Goday, I, I knew the answer, but I wanted people in the public to hear the answer, um, about our, uh, testing availability for free to staff and students. But then, how many instances of COVID leave was approved in the previous policy? Uh, I thought it was, was it more than one instance of COVID leave? I don't recall, but I thought it was. What was the, what was the policy that we passed for last school year as it relates to COVID leave in terms of the number of instances?
I was like, what's that, was this close? Um, so it's the same policy, and it was once, um, the same policy that's here now. The only thing that we did was roll over the same information, just changed the date.
Okay. And I apologize, I know why, I apologize, because this particular strain, not strain, this particular variant, people get reinfected. Uh, in the others, we didn't have that. That's the reason why I was willing to consider a substitute. I didn't have a lot of problems with, much else with the policy, but, I mean, can I at least get people to, would anybody be willing to entertain? Okay, I appreciate that, and then we don't have to really belabor, you know, or can and, but what's wrong with two, people are really getting to more than one instance of COVID? Okay.
Mr. Goday, why don't you make the motion?
Yeah, make the motion.
The motion, since there's no motion on the floor, you make a motion to move it without, a, a substitute motion to move it without recommendation, and we need a second for that.
Well, so then, so then, um, Goday and Ware Jackson. And then, okay, I still have two minutes. Let me get some, is this procedurally correct for me to keep going on my time with the sub on the table?
We're, we're on a substitute motion, which is a new motion.
Okay.
So now you have five minutes additional to speak.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna use the whole five. It slipped my mind. So I have not touched my five. When it come back, I, I have not touched my five. Go ahead, if it come back by the time you finish out, I'll put my little thing in. I was too busy paying attention to the procedure. And I'm gonna start your five back over, kindly.
I, I think that, that we also have sick leave in the policy for just in general. I, I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to propose to be a medical professional and make these kind of decisions. The superintendent asked us to approve one instance of COVID leave, and I think that, uh, maybe we can amend that in, again, in the future, if things change, we learn more about how the virus is changing, but I, I want to approve one instance right now. That's what I want to do. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Dupree, do you have, um, I thought I glanced at, I won't pretend to have done extensive research on, um, on the validity of folks saying that there have been more than one instance, but we do have members of the public who had personal testimony. Have you seen any, uh, or had an opportunity to review? You may not have, not had an opportunity to review any, uh, evidence-based research?
Um, at this point in time, I have not had the opportunity to look at the scientific evidence-based research.
Okay.
With the new variant, I do know the symptoms are a little bit different, but I'll be reaching out to, um, some of our medical professionals on our health advisory committee to get an answer for that.
Okay. That'd be helpful. I mean, that's cool. Board, board colleague Goday.
Yes, I'll be quick. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew, according to Louisiana Department of Health, the incidence of COVID seems to have, in this area, had, or not in this area, but, uh, this is in the state, seems to have peaked on July 11th, and the trends have been downward since that date. So hopefully, I can always hope, but hopefully, this is not going to be a big issue, uh, in the future. I expect we may get a tick up when, uh, school starts, but, uh, it does seem like the incidence is falling, and I think that's been a nationwide thing. So I recognize this variance different, but, um, just don't want to overreact on some of this stuff, because it's coming down. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Baloo.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Whether we vote for the substitute motion or, or vote to pass it to the consent agenda, I think the results can be the same and that somebody's going to wind up pulling it, so I don't think it really matters. I plan on voting against the substitute motion, just because I don't want to give the impression that I'm, I'm in favor of changing the policy, uh, which I support the policy as it is, so, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other requests to speak from the board. Madam Secretary, please call a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, substitute motion, thank you.
I believe Mr. Baloo is correct. Somebody will pull this anyway, so you may as well have the agenda in two weeks reflect what the public can expect to transpire, which is that this is considered separately. So thank you, Mr. Goday, for your substitute motion. I think that would be appropriate, even if you end up in two weeks voting for the policy ex- exactly as it's proposed by the administration. It warrants its separate conversation, separate from the consent agenda. And thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like an additional card?
No, you don't need an additional card on the sub, unless you haven't spoken already. We already have a card. I mean, that's how I understood it. Come on.
I gave her an additional card. I forgot to say earlier, thank you for beating me to putting this on the agenda, because I was on my way to having somebody do it, and you had already done it, Superintendent Narcissus, so thank you. I said it on Facebook to the teachers, but I wanted to say it to you publicly. I ask that you guys do pull this and look at it, and, I mean, pe- even before this variant, people got Delta and then got Omicron throughout the nine months of the school year. And this one, people are getting it twice, even if it's on a downward, there's going to be another one, Board Member Goday. So, I mean, and, and, and there is something in the policy that protects you all. If you're fraudulent with it, you get fired. Y'all have something in there to protect you from fraudulent. So people, I mean, unless you want these teachers coming sick, because guess what's still out there? The flu, other viruses. Our kids still get sick, so we need our actual real 10 sick days that we get for when the other stuff happens, when you have to go to other doctor's appointments. You can't just say, oh, well, they still have sick days, because we still need those things for the other sicknesses that still exist, because everything isn't COVID. So please, take this to send it separately from the consent agenda. Truly look at it. Do your research, look at what this variant is doing, and please, please, please be fair to the people who work for you. Thank you.
I just want to highlight some of the things that are said. Uh, Board Member Goday, uh, you're right, there is a downward trend, but if we look at COVID from the beginning, all the way back in January of 2020, when it arrived in the United States, we look at the line, it does this, up and down, up and down, up and down. I understand the trend, I, look, my degree is in political science, I look at trends all day. With that being said, we have personal testimony, we have concrete evidence that shows that this variant is much more transmissible than other variants. This is a downward trend. I understand the concern of not wanting to overreact with the policy. I also want to uplift our teachers, our students. I also wanna uplift our teachers, our students, everyone, health and safety, that maybe we do need to look at this a little bit further and offer just a tad, even if it's two instances of five days. Offer that because we do not want to play with the health and safety of our board members, teachers, students, parents, support staff, anyone within the school system. So I would just wanna uplift our comments that were, uplift the comments that were previously said. Go back, look at it, do what you need to do. But I would highly recommend that we offer more than one instance, given the rate that COVID is more transmissible, the other variants that are coming up. And really and truly, as, as the old saying goes, you know, just think ahead. What could happen? Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment back to the board. Board Member Godey?
Yes, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to make sure teachers and everyone understood that no way I was trying to say there was any kind of fraudulent activity when talking about things. My concern is more over the administering of home tests and false policies, when, or false positives, when we have a free testing ability for all of our staff. And so that was my only thing. I meant to imply nothing about people trying to game the system. Thank you.
All right. Now, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote.
On the substitute motion, yes.
The motion carries.
Now moving forward with item C-13, professional services contracts.
It's, it's, it's coming up. It's gonna pop up. Give it a second. Or not.
It's moving kinda slowly here.
There you go.
There it is. All right, now moving forward with item C-14. Oh, no, C-13, professional services contracts, tracks, volunteers in public schools. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of professional service contracts between EBR school, EBR schools and volunteers in public schools in the amount of $25,000 and $58,000 respectively for everybody reason, everyone counts programs. Can I get a first? Board Member Ware Jackson. And a second. Board Member Baloo. All right. And seeing no requests to speak from the board and seeing no public comment. And then back to the board. And I just wanna mess it up and public and, and use my time to request to speak to say, I think this is amazing because it's an amazing program. That's all I have to say. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
All right, moving forward with item C-14, litigation. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel of East Baton Rouge Parish School Board in the matter of Tiffany Chester et al. In the 19th JDC. Number 655 to 60, Section 22, Parish of East Baton Rouge. And Board President Tapman, can I get a second from? Oh, I'm sorry. Board Member Godey. Seeing a request to speak. Coranda Corley from the public. Dr. Finney from the public, since you are in the room. And then we shall be waiting eagerly, Sister Corley, after Dr. Finney. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave her a couple of extra minutes. I have no opinion as to whatever strategy was proposed because that's not accessible to the public. There are two things I think should be on the backup, though. One tonight and one sometime later. It would be useful, since there are 387,014 people give or take in this school district, if on the backup, it indicated some basic facts, like there was allegedly a car wreck on Flannery that involved a private vehicle and a school bus. And then, most of us would decide, okay, whatever. And then, once this is settled finally and a payout is or isn't made, it would be helpful for the public to get that as part of a report on a, on a board meeting backup. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Sister Corley.
I'm gonna make it brief. I really support paying everybody that sue us. And I believe in paying them because we wouldn't have lawsuits against us if we just followed the law. That is a problem. We're not following the law. I cannot blame Mr. Shamlin. I cannot blame Mr. Stewart, Wayne T. Stewart. I can't blame them at all because they come on the back end after people have caused the, the co-focus.
Okay, but anything specific to this lawsuit?
Yes, ma'am. 19 JDCs should not have to waste their time having to have these things filed from our people. So, number one, I think that we should pay them filing costs. We should pay this individual their filing cost. We should pay them all monies for their attorney fees. And we should pay them whatever else they're asking for. I, I know that my lawsuit is coming soon. So I know I won't be able to speak on that one when that one comes before everybody. But I do think that we have to look at that we wouldn't have this problem if we just adhere to the law. And I'm saying on record, it is not, it is not Mr. Shamlin's fault that I'm filing. It is not Mr. Stewart's fault. Because, again, they came at the end and they only have to deal with me when it comes to the lawsuit. But it's not their fault. But I do think that if we actually put, we can quit paying outside attorneys if we can give Mr. Shamlin a real true legal department that he heads, where he can have other attorneys working upon to him that can deal with some of these issues. And I'm gonna keep the rest of my time for the next one. It's, it's one minute and five seconds.
Seeing no other comment cards from the public to speak. Board Member Ware Jackson.
I just have one request and around this. Not this in particular, but just in general, that we would review our policies, review the policy in particular regarding the frequency of checks that we do on our licenses. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, noted.
And no other requests to speak from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C-15, extern agreement. The recommended action is consideration of a request for the approval of an amendment to the extern agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agricultural and Mechanical College in the amount of $397,802 to extend the agreement for one year to provide externs for up to 48 sections. Moved by Board Member Godey and seconded by Board Member Bernard, had gotten it to it first, Board Member Dyson. All righty, and seeing no requests to speak from the board and seeing no public comment.
In a moment, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. James Finney. Seems like a reasonable plan. I'm just confused by the arithmetic. If you take up to 48 sections and multiply by the $10,200 cost of each, you don't get the total budget. Since it's proposed by a math professor, I couldn't help but as a mathematician to point out that inconsistency. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other request cards from the public, back to the board. Can I go, can, so for me, can I just get some clarity from Ms. Hall on the, how we get to our amounts?
Can you repeat the question?
We have 48 sections?
It's actually 39, so my apologies. The contract?
Okay.
Yes, it's 39. I'm sorry.
Okay. And then just for clarity, let me, because I didn't... And the backup material showed 39 instead of 48?
That is correct. The contract states that.
I just wanted to, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. That was simple enough. Seeing no other requests to speak. Oh, Board Member Ware Jackson.
Please, can we make that correction? If we're voting on, on something and the, the item for consideration has the wrong number in it, can we correct that, please? So that we are voting on the right thing. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so then moving forward. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C-16. Grant Kelly G. Cook Foundation's Deborah Rochelle Grant. The recommended action, consideration of a request for the acceptance of the Deborah Rochelle Teacher Grant from the Kelly G. Cook Foundation for five teachers for a total of $20,557 to provide for classroom projects. Can I get a motion? Moved by Board Member Bernard. Can I get a second by Board Member Dyson? Seeing no requests to speak from the board. Seeing no comment cards for item number 16 from the public, back to the board, no requests to speak. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C-17, extended day salary. The recommended action is a consideration of a request to amend the extended day hourly rate to range from $25 to $35 per hour and approve schools to set a site-specific rate based on the availability of funding. Can I get a motion? Okay. First by Board Member Baloo and seconded by Board Member Bernard. See, oh, Board Member Dyson.
Yes, thank you. It's been brought to my attention when we raise the rate, there are some schools that operate their own after-school programs. And when they do, they haven't been able to fund that up to $10 increase in the hourly rate. And so I have asked, I've spoken with the superintendent about this to see what we could do. And my understanding is that we will help to fund that difference between the 25 and up to the 35. And I just wanted to make sure that that is the case and let the, let the schools know that.
Yes, we, we will work to support the schools accordingly.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to point out, as you notice in the language, it says up to 35. They're up to $35. So it may, may not necessarily be $35, but it just says up to 35.
Thank you very much.
Board colleague Bernard.
I ask for this item to be placed on the agenda. The, the rate of pay was capped at $25 an hour. In some instances, teachers are able to tutor children after school in their own home or the library, which might even be more convenient. So some schools were having difficulty with getting people who would do this. And I want, also want to point out the language in it. It says to, for, to approve schools to set a site-specific rate. So a school will set the rate based on what they are able to in their budget and what they're using, this, this, you know, the source of the funding. It says availability of funding. So if a school, it's giving the discretion to the principal to set the rate of pay based on the availability of funds at their site. So this is not us saying that we are going to pay everybody $35 an hour. This is saying that the school may pay people $35 an hour. And so it's giving them the discretion. It's not saying that we are gonna supplement the individual site. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other requests to speak. Madam Secretary, please call the vote. To the public with the comment cards. Okay. Pass from Dr. Finney. So then next we have Sister Sharon Matthews.
As we have a shortage in the daytime of classrooms, we also have a shortage in people who wanna stay. We've had teachers, even in my school, the person who runs our extended day is like, please, y'all, we just need like three more people. We just, it, it pays this. You know, getting people to stay. So I absolutely appreciate the up to pay because I had somebody ask me the other day, wait, isn't it 35 now? And I was like, no, no, that was summer. You know, that's what was in the budget. That's from ESER. There's specific funds because of summer money. It's set aside for that. So I do appreciate, I do think this is good. I have one thing, though. Now, Superintendent Narcisse, you have put forth two very good things for your employees today. I thank you for that. That's a good step. I took a step with you. I publicly said thank you. I publicly gave you credit. Hard pill for Sharon Matthews to swallow, but I did that. But on this one, we took a step back because you told principals before this came on the agenda that extended day pay was $35 an hour. Because I had the principals argue with me that it was $35 an hour. I'm like, no, it's not. And then, when the, when the agenda dropped the next day, I'm like, how did you know it was gonna be $35 an hour? And they're like, because they told us at the meeting. I'm like, well, I'll be darned. Well, it's on there. This is a good thing. So even when you do something really good, it's the way you go about it. Work with us, please. This is good. Just do it the right way. Please.
And Sister Coranda Corley.
I would like to tell our interpreters they are doing a great job and that we should, we should... I would like to tell our interpreters, they are doing a great job and that we should, uh, we should give them an increase in pay, too. Um, one, the thirty-five dollars an hour does not bother me. What bothers me is that we're saying that the school, that the school system is going to make up the difference. I know that right now, we're looking at a fifty-six million dollar deficit for, um, the upcoming year. So exactly what funding source are we going to get that money from? In addition to that, I'm aware that, um, extended day programs and before day, does, uh, before school does not exist at a lot of our schools. It's only at certain schools. And certain schools, calm down. And certain schools have YMCA as the, uh, as the, uh, group that actually, stop. Yes. They have YMCA as the group that actually provides that extended day service. So, those schools cannot provide extended day programs for children with disabilities because the individuals that they normally have are children that are between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five. So, if we're going to have, um, extended day program, we need to also make sure that we have that at all eighty-three schools. We cannot selectively pick what school we're going to have it at. In addition, because that would be discrimination. Second, we need to look at having before care. There is many, many, uh, staff, many, many parents that work jobs that have to be to work early and they cannot have their kids at school in a timely fashion. But last but definitely not least, I want to know if we're going to have busing for those students that are in extended day. Because I, I'm always in agree-
This item is specifically about the pay. The pay to those at it, that work. This, but this is specifically around.
Ms. April didn't stop my clock, but it was at fifty-four seconds, I remember. Okay, so, with that pay, we do have to look at what funding source is going to be and exactly if that's going to be economically feasible for our school system. Every program that we come up with, they are some, this is a great idea. But that doesn't mean that we have the monies to actually be able to afford us with this, uh, and make this a reality. So I do think that we need to look at that and we need to make sure of that. And I hope that somebody can actual, actually table this. So we can actually see if we're trying to bite off more than what we can chew. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And seeing no other public cards for item C seventeen. Coming back to the board, seeing no requests to speak from the board. Madam Secretary, when you get back to your chairs, please call the votes.
Now we give you that one.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C eighteen, request for qualifications. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the authorization for staff to issue a RFQ to seek proposals to provide construction management at risk, Seymour, services for the following tax plan projects. An elementary school in the southern part of the parish and then B Broadmoor Middle Schools Art Conservatory. Moved by board, uh, President Tapman and then seconded by board colleague Dyson. Seeing no request to speak from the board. One, public comment. Two, public comment. Uh, Dr. James Finney. And then Sister Coraun DeCorle.
Thank you. It would be interesting to know about this different way of managing a construction project. But I realize you're trying out this experiment of being done by nine. What I want to say, though, in about one-sixth of my allotted time, is that you shouldn't be developing a brand-new high school four blocks away from a high school. You should be spreading that money around the parish. And before you go very far down the road of whatever this South Baton Rouge school is, you should have a master plan that determines what grades you need and how many classes and that sort of thing. So I would hope we don't build a building and hope they come, but instead have a fairly good idea of what resources are needed. And sorry, I was going to stop at thirty seconds, so, thank you.
Thank you. And Sister Corle.
Our board meetings are not child-friendly. Sorry, my, our board meetings are not very child-friendly and it's about children. This request for qual, uh, qualifications, first and foremost, I ask that we get, we make it handicap accessible. It, it doesn't, it's saying that it's going to be about, about the project for elementary school, uh, in the southern part of the parish, but also about the Broadmoor, um, school for the arts. We need to make these buildings handicap accessible. We can't think that we're going to have a program for the arts and we're not going to include children with disabilities because then that, that again would be discriminatory. We have to make sure that staff and students alike can matriculate safely in and out of the building with all things that they need. If they have sensory processing, whether they're orthopedic impaired, visually impaired, that don't mean that they're supposed to be excluded. So, I talk about this equity because it's not here. My child can't attend the meetings, like talking without me having to holler or speak up a lot louder in the microphone because we're not provided accommodations in the meetings. We have to make sure every child is at the forefront. We're lying when we're telling everybody, every student, every day matter, and they can't walk in the building. We're lying when we tell them, every student, every day, but they can't appropriately sit at the desk.
Request for qualifications.
Okay, that's five seconds. I get back. We have to make sure that the buildings are safe for our children to go in, as well as the staff, but that it meets all of the federal guidelines. All the federal guidelines, the monitors that's put up, that falls up under the construction, too. But that's not at the forefront. We need to make it to where every child and every staff member will be able to be in that building. Every building, because it's every student, every day. And right now, if Corinne can talk, he would actually tell y'all that he wants to make sure he can go in that building, too. And that he would actually be able to be a participant in the arts program, too, because he like art, every art. Dance is one of them that's going to be at that Broadmoor.
RFQ process, ma'am.
Uh, yes, ma'am. So, I, I hope that we can give them some ADA money so that they can actually make sure those buildings are in ADA compliance and also give them some money to make sure our playgrounds and everything else get updated as well. Thank you.
Tell them thank you.
Uh, board president Tapman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I know this is about RFQ, but I just got to say something. This is a tax, the elementary school in South Baton Rouge is a tax plan project. So it's just, you know, we're just following through on that. You all still have to vote on it because we're in the process of finalizing that. But I'll tell you this, there will be a lot of children that use our system that will be able to walk to school on this project. It's going to be an amazing project if we can pull it off. And so, I know it's about RFQ, but we, this is an important project and I know everybody's supportive of it. But that, the elementary school in South Baton Rouge still has to come back to the board for approval. Not the funding of it, the location of the land. So we're going to bring that back to you as soon as we get it. Uh, but this is, this is going to be an amazing school and it's going to be something that I bet a large majority of the kids who go there walk. So, I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Seeing no other requests to speak. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with reports, item D one, a report from H E S.
Alrighty. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope everyone's well tonight. Um, my name is Dominic Holman. I would like to thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm the director, uh, district director for H E S in, uh, East Baton Rouge School District. Uh, standing beside me is Mr. Patrick Ficklin. He serves as the custodial director for H E S. And we would like to just go over some, uh, points with you regarding the level of communication uh, that's been set in place for the success of the school district going forward. Okay? So, um, I created a, is it, it's not a guy, sorry. Um, so just work orders and expectations. All right, so all work orders are to be created through the email portal via ebr.src@hesfacilities.com. Once created, level of importance and turnaround time will be allocated.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I'm the one that requested this. So, in your presentation, are we going to have the status of the schools? In terms of the custodial and the groundskeeping, is that going to be part of your presentation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Got it. All right. So once created, the level of importance and turnaround timeline will be allocated. Time allocations will go stated. So life, safety, and immediate response should be responded to within two hours and four hours of target completion. Urgent responses are eight hours, within eight hours and twenty-four hours target completion. Routine maintenance is thirty-day target completion. All right? Now, please note, the completion of time for each work order is completely dependent on the scope of the project. We create this based on the projected work order volume, so times may vary. The maintenance startup, we've established a workflow process that centers around the zone manager and SRC communication and work order tracking. We've established relationships with twenty-nine local vendors and suppliers and developed a work order status form that will update the schools and administrative office for work order completion or status in real time. Alrighty, and now as we segue over to the custodial piece, I'd like to bring Patrick on.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the community, and members of the public watching. Just question, quick introduction, um, Patrick Ficklin, Director of Custodial Services with H E S Facilities. Uh, my wife and I, residents of EBR, children attend EBR schools, so this is near and dear to me. Pat Hall from Miss Dyson in the past. Um, so, I'm very proud to serve this district. I've been here for a few years. Um, I believe in what, what you all do here. I believe in what we're trying to do here. Um, I believe that there has been quite the emotion spent on facilities in my short time in EBR. I think Mr. Howard can agree with that. So, what I want to make clear is that, you know, a few notes that I took away from our experience in EBR and my experience now in EBR is the level of service that we hope to provide is not centered on one zone. It is all zones, North Baton Rouge, from Woodlawn High School to Baker Adult Ed. All schools in between, all administrative sites in between. Nobody goes unnoticed, nobody goes unchecked. It's my personal commitment to visit every site within the next month to know exactly what's in front of me, because I know it's a lot. But just please be faith, be patient with us, uh, have faith in us. And just know that we will do our best to serve you as you have chosen us to represent the district. So, a couple of points that I wanted to make tonight, uh, when it comes to the, when it comes to the custodial piece of what we do, that's simply a title. Um, I care about much more than just the custodial aspects of our schools, how the grounds look, are the roofs functional? Is communication there? What can we do to better serve the students in our sites? When it comes to staffing in sites, we are committed to staffing all sites by partnering with vendors, our local vendors, that's local talent, to establish a pipeline of talent for both parties.
Sorry, Patrick, I just, I just want to kind of, okay. Uh, I think the board wants to hear about whether schools are ready, which schools-
Oh, I apologize. Yep. So, we are a hundred percent staffed at all day sites. And we have, so not only are we a hundred percent staffed at all day sites, we are working on an active sub-program that will allow for emergency call-outs, uh, anything that may interrupt a normal day porter's routines throughout the day. So those pieces are in place as we speak now. We are, not only are we actively recruiting for, for teams during the day, but also teams at night as well, because we understand the burden that's placed on them if we're not available throughout the day. So I can answer that a little bit, hopefully.
Can you give a report to the board on, uh, how many buildings are ready for Monday, um, any, uh?
So, we spent a lot of time earlier today with the T Ds and the leadership team within EBR to, to, to go through feedback that was provided. Um, most of the concerns were HVAC-related, which are being worked on as we speak. Um, there are other concerns out there, you know, including grounds and whatnot. But schools are ready for students on Monday. So we have, uh, we have plans that we will continue to work through and work on. And that involves communication on all parts of EBR. Um, I think we have a great communication team here. I think anything that's come to us, we've addressed quickly. We know that we have a long road in front of us, but our main priority since July first, which has been every day since July first, a lot of hours, is to make sure that students and teachers can get in the classrooms on August eighth. So, what we've reported is we do feel confident that, that that can happen. We do know that, that there are still challenges that we have to overcome. But there shouldn't be anything that prevents a student or a teacher from being in their classrooms on August eighth.
Out of the number of campuses that we have, how many, uh, um, how many are clean? Can you give any estimate to the board for that?
So, there are, no, no campuses have been reported unclean. We have, our focus when we came aboard was to get all classrooms ready, which we've accomplished that. We are doing daily checks and daily walks in sites to make sure that anything that has been missed is being addressed. And that's not pushed thirty, sixty days down the road. That means immediately addressed. We've gotten a lot of feedback from Woodlawn High School, for instance, regarding rooms that were of concern. And we understand that that has been a few examples of maybe things that we've inherited, but that's neither here nor there. Our job's to fix it. And so we want to make sure we set a precedent on what we can provide and what we can do by being allowed to do what we are able to do in those sites.
You put yourself back in the queue. Board colleague Howard.
Thank you. Um, but I don't know what I was going to say. Thank you, um, Madam Vice President Collins. Um, so I think my question is more of a comment than a question. Um, I think one of the, the reasons that many of us as a board advocated, uh, for our previous vendor to no longer be our vendor um, was because the standard of excellence in care that we seek in facilities was not happening. And I'm just going to be brutally honest, I feel some of those same tensions occurring with this transition process to H E S. Um, as a matter of fact, I went to go visit one of my schools today. And I was just very concerned with the level of care that I saw, um, at this particular school. Um, we are, uh, two days out from school. Um, this particular program is a very, uh, successful athletic program in, in this system. And what I saw was not a standard of care that I would want to send my own- and what I saw was not a standard of care that I would want to send my own kids to. And so there has been many concerns about like what transition with staff has been, and also the capacity of HES to deliver the standard of care that we, we've suggested and the reason that we moved away from their last vendor. I, last time, I think we took a lot from Airmark. And I'm going to be brutally honest. If this board member continues to see what I feel like is a breach of contract, I will bring it before the board that we find a new direction to go in, because we, we dealt with this for too long with Airmark not delivering a standard of excellence that our students and our facilities deserve, and I just won't idly stand by while that continues to happen. So I would encourage you to do a deep dive of what the culture and what the transition has looked like and figure out what we as a collective district can do to help you deliver the standard of care that we are paying for. Thank you.
Boy, colleague Bernard.
Thank you, Ms. Collins, and thank you, Mr. Holman and Mr. Ficklin for being here tonight. I appreciate your report. Requests for service are emailed. Is there a confirmation? And I'm going to just go ahead and do my part B to this. Do you use an app for tracking the work orders so that we know when it's closed out or that we know when we can expect things to be addressed? Do you have an app, like a software program that you're using with the principals?
Yes, that, that will be coming online next month. As of right now, we are using the email system only. Okay, that is managed by Ms. Wanda Nixon. She's very good at making sure she captures all that information and actually preparing the timeline to what you need.
Okay, thank you. And so when I send an email, let's say that I'm a principal and I send an email to you, do, do I know to expect a confirmation right away within a certain period of time? Or is it just, because let's say that I typed the email address in wrong incorrectly and I think that you got it and you did not.
Okay. Okay, so if that's the case, if, if something's typed in correctly, then I wouldn't have got it. One of the things, you know, that I like about the, the, the school system here is a lot of people do a lot of follow-up, a lot of principals and their staff. So when they call me, I immediately call Wanda, and we put that, we make sure that work order is created if it hasn't been already.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm just asking for a, some kind of confirmation from Ms. Wanda to say, we got it, we're on it, we're going to be processing this.
Yes, ma'am, that, that, once it's created, once the work order is created, yes, we do send the confirmation.
So if I don't get that as an, as an, as a principal, then I know that maybe I typed the email address and I should follow up with that.
Yes, that will be correct.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to say one more thing to tag on to what my colleague said. A clean building and a well-maintained building says to our team and our students that we value you, and it helps to set a culture of respect on our campuses, both for the building and the built environment and for each other as fellow human beings. So I appreciate the work you're doing and I thank you for helping us to maintain that.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Gigi not gonna be as nice, because Gigi's baby went deliver school supplies at the school and the yard, the lawn looks like a hot rabbit mess. And it's not just that school. It's a problem across our district, and in no way can I even believe all of our lawns gonna be ready for Monday. I ain't even gonna let you sit there and lie to me and tell me. By Monday, when the babies go school, all our lawns are gonna look presentable. But I'm not just gonna only worry about Gigi's baby. When teachers call saying that their principals are cleaning toilets, I don't know what 100% staffed is supposed to look like, but I just can't believe a principal is gonna have to be worrying about cleaning toilets when they should be worrying about getting their staff prepared for the first day of school. So I don't know, again, what 100% staffed at all sites mean for y'all, but I can't believe 100% staffed. I mean, if they gotta look forward to cleaning toilets all the time instead of teaching kids, we have a problem. How much are you paying these staff? I know that y'all are a new company. You have every right to, I mean, not every right. The realness is, there was another company, you, who had employees, probably had been with them for a while, et cetera, et cetera. That company is no longer with us, but then you also have a staffing need as a brand-new company on the scene. Some of these people are reporting $9 decreases. They can't live on that. And when your staffing need is so high, because that's a large, the custodial folks, it's a large number of folks. Okay, we don't have people lined up from, from 1050 South Foster Drive all the way to Government Street saying they want to come work and, and do the hard work of custodial staff. So just like we have a teacher shortage, sound like you creating a staffing issue for yourself by not giving these people comparable pay, which we knew was gonna be an issue for, before this was even voted to be approved, because you refused to answer the question when every other vendor present said what they were willing to pay folks, y'all skirted around the question. I knew then it was gonna be a problem, especially with Amazon coming and raising the bar for the area. If you're not even willing to commit to doing better than what's already here, what problem are you gonna have once we have a huge labor competitor in play down the street? Down the street. I also have heard concerns about the pony system. Did you, you forgot to put my time. I got carried away, how much time I got? Oh, because it's the presentation. Well, god dog it, no, I'm not gonna take too much longer. But what's up, give me a status of the pony system. And then, what we want to see, when you come back before the board, and because school starts next week, and the, and the level of concern that has been expressed to us is high, we don't need to wait till September to get an update on whether or not our principals still have to clean toilets. What we need is the next board meeting, a status update per school. I want to pray and believe you have the staffing capacity to go to each school and check off the basic fundamental things. I'm not even gonna get into summer cleaning didn't happen, we needed to happen on every campus, because we know that I ain't even gonna put you on the spot to misrepresent, okay? But basic fundamental stuff so that our students get on that campus, our teachers get on those campuses, is done. Come back to us with a report about that. That the lawns were taken care of, that the basic cleaning was taken care of, and that the pony system is intact per school. That would be greatly appreciated. And that's all of my, no, go ahead, and for this moment, let me know about your pony, what's up with the pony system.
So the pony system is fully functional right now. We have vans actually delivering to each school.
How many vans do you have, sir?
We have a total of three vans right now, and we also have a box truck.
Three vans. Can someone from facilities give me a comparison of what our usual?
So specifically with the pony system, Airmark had four vehicles, if I remember correctly, moving through the system.
Okay, so then comparable. Okay, I appreciate that. And then grounds, when can we, what's up with the grounds? When can we reasonably expect that each school's grounds are gonna be brought back up to, to par?
Okay, so all the grounds should be brought back up to par before the beginning of school. I know the weather has provided us with some challenges regarding that over the weeks. It's been raining almost every day, but I understand that, that just means that we need to have a proper plan of recourse in place to do that. We fixed some things, made sure that we're planning proactively to address the ant moles, ant mounds, I mean, crab weeds, and flower beds, you know, or flower bed, you know, garden, whatever you call it. An effective communication with principals is of course key in those particular situations, especially when it comes to the delayed cuts.
Okay. And then some things, just to be clear on, some things are just so regular and so basic. If I got to send you an email, I got to put something in the app. We in a bad place. So we holding you to Monday, when Gigi go visit her baby at school, that I wanted to, I, I just want to see that it's beautiful. I ain't even gonna tell you which school it is, because I'm believing in you, that you say Monday, all the school's grounds are gonna be immaculate. I will go ahead and let my colleague, board member, Wade Jackson proceed.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Look, I know, I know you guys have been left in a lurch with not having work that was supposed to be done in June, just completely ignored, and, and there's a lot that has piled up on July. However, our principals really take a lot of pride in welcoming their children back into the schools and very clean buildings, you know, nice shiny floors, bathrooms that are in really good shape. I took the time yesterday to visit some schools, and some of the things that I saw were very disturbing. It's particularly the conditions of, of restrooms. There was water on the floor, just, just a, a lot of things. You could tell that the bathrooms hadn't been cleaned for probably since May. Stuff left in the toilets even. It was very disturbing. And then to find out that one school in particular, I, I know the principal and the lead staff were cleaning the bathrooms themselves. Another principal has hired a team and paid them out of her own pocket to come in and, and clean the restrooms and, and clean some of the classrooms as well. So that's, it's, it's very disturbing. She even had some of her family come in and, and some others do some volunteer work and pressure wash the entrances, because that's really important. You know, when they bring the students in, they want things looking really good. And the floor in the lobby, personally, you know, I didn't think anything of it, you know, but it wasn't acceptable for that principal, because that floor hadn't been cleaned. It, it wasn't shiny, they were just, it, it wasn't at the level that they expect to welcome these kids after the summer. You walked in, walk into a bathroom, you could tell it, it had, you know, I, I did it myself. I walked in and, you know, it smelled like it hadn't been, you know, it just wasn't good. Classrooms, same conditions. And I don't know if, if, who, who would be responsible for some of the summer cleaning that, and some of the summer spot painting that they would normally do. Lots of the classrooms, you know, still had, had marks on the walls and, and one principal was even doing spot painting outside, where, you know, there was stuff missing on the walls and, so, so anyway, to say, to say, you know, we're disappointed is an understatement. We don't have much time, and like you said, you know, the weather is very unpredictable, or it is very predictable, because it's been raining every day, you know. And so I don't know how we'll possibly have everything in the condition that it, it should be in. But hopefully, you know, I know we maybe, may say, you know, we're off to a kind of rocky start, but hopefully we'll be able to get some traction and, and pick up some speed and pick up the quality that I know that our principals expect in, in their schools. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. And that is all, that's, that's it. Those are all the requests from the board. Thank you very much. Moving forward with item D2, a redistricting report.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Just briefly, the report that I uploaded is pretty much identical to last week's report with a few minor changes. Ms. Wade Jackson requested that we include information on staff salaries, estimates hourly related to the RFP process, so I included that. And also just a quick update on the federal case. We had a status conference on July 27th, and a hearing has been set in that matter on August 17th at 9:00 a.m. And I will send the board more detailed information about location, time, et cetera, within the next couple of days, just to make sure people know when various hearings are happening and the time. We'll make sure you get that.
All right, board member Wade Jackson.
Could you give us a little bit more detail on the, the status conferences and what that's about, basically?
Yes, ma'am. Status conference in this case was to, for the judge to make a determination as to whether he would make a decision at that time or set a hearing date to gather more information. By understanding, it was very brief, only counsel were allowed to attend that. And the decision essentially was that to set the matter for hearing, and this is the federal litigation that involves whether or not the election itself will be stayed, okay? And so we expect that a decision will be rendered sometime after a hearing on the 17th of August in that matter.
Okay. All right. Thanks, I just want to make an observation around, you know, every time we have something on the agenda, we have a cornerstone, we have the commitment and key performance indicators. And ironically, this is under operational excellence, and our commitment is to be responsible stewards of community resources for the achievement of district priorities. So, you know, I have to question operational excellence in this area and, and achievement of district priorities. You know, as it were, this, all of this was around breaking the law, basically, being accused of breaking the law. And I don't think it's quite a district priority that we violate state law and federal law. We're also looking to streamline district services and operations to improve district interactions and experiences as part of the key performance indicators, and to increase clear and consistent internal and external communications through all district channels. There's such irony in all of this. So I, I just have to point this out, that we are spending a lot of money to do the wrong thing. And it's definitely in violation of state and federal law. Thank you for the report, Mr. Shamlin. I appreciate you keeping us updated.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving forward with, oh, I want to take a quick moment of personal privilege. I have a, I'm digging in my phone for it. I have, in addition to the amazing back-to-school badge that the school system is doing, oftentimes these things have, we have more than one. So coincidentally, I joined in collaboration with some other elected officials. So I'm recommending that people hit up both, because that's how people roll in Baton Rouge. So in addition to the one that the superintendent and staff are organizing for the school system, there's also one on Saturday, and superintendent, do you want to share about that one? And by then I can pull, make sure I don't mess up times and stuff on the details on this other one.
Yes, Vice President Collins, we have actually two events. Friday night, which, tomorrow night, we have the back-to, back-to-school block party, which will be in downtown, which begins actually at 6:00 p.m., is that correct? So, and what's the streets that'll be on, you have? It'll be on Third Street downtown. We will have teachers there, staff, and also families there. Also be riding bikes in the city and providing supplies. So we start on tomorrow night downtown. We'll even have support from our mayor and other folks. And then on Saturday, we have in the Raising Cane Center from 11:00, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll have our, we're hopeful of our, what we call our annual back-to-school badge, Vice President Collins. And I still have a dream that it'll all be in one place every year. But we have it at the Raising Cane Center, where we'll be giving, we'll have all your schools there, all of, a majority of all of our partners in this. Um, but we have it at the Raising Cane Center where we'll be giving, um, we'll have all your schools there, all of, all, majority of all of our partners in the city, all over the, and also actually all over the parish, including, um, vaccinations, health, a haircut for kids, book bags. Um, and so, uh, we're super excited. We're doing this the second year. Um, so we're hopeful that, um, we have thousands of more parents than we even had last year because we had a lot of, uh, community folks come out last year, so we're super excited about this year. So those are our, our main two events, uh, for this year.
Awesome. And then after you finish or before you go, squeeze in a back-to-school bash in, uh, in North Baton Rouge with myself, Councilman Darrell Hurst, uh, State Rep Vanessa LaFlore, and Senator Regina Barrow. Uh, we'll be doing that with book sack, school supply, uniform giveaway at the North Sherwood Forest Community Park, right next to our PDC center. And the time for that is eleven AM to two PM. And one more quick thing, y'all know I had been doing my culture and diversity reader, and then, you know, there's only so much time in the day, but I'm bringing it back and I'm letting you all know. I don't have the printed copy yet, but for this month's reading recommendations, and I'll be here next meeting, sharing it all. I have, uh, the focus of the month is classism and the laws and philosophies that create socio-economic hierarchies. And so four books, uh, Shame of the Nation, The Restoration of Apartheid Schooling in America by Jonathan Kozol, uh, When Affirmative Action Was White, An Untold History of Racial Inequality in Twentieth Century America by Ira Katz Nelson. And then, and I'll use, this is the title of the book, I, I, I don't mean offense, but the title of the book for a reason. White Trash, The, The Four Hundred Year Untold Story of Class in America because it highlights that class is a problem across the board regardless of race. So I thought that's why it was important for that one. And last but not least, Automating Inequality: How High-Tech Tools Profile Police and Punish the Poor by Virginia Eubanks. And that is all I got. And then board member Go Day, you had some, uh, something special to share?
Yes, in the, uh, thank you very much for recognizing, I'll be very brief again. Uh, the Gardere Initiative will also be sponsoring a back-to-school bash from nine AM till eleven AM on Saturday before the big back-to-school bash by the district. And, um, that will be at the Hartley Bay Park, uh, right off of Gardere, uh, Lane. Uh, so anyone in that area, I strongly encourage you to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Announcements of meetings. Uh, the next regular meeting to be held on August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at five o'clock PM here at the Central Office Boardroom, and then our next committee of the whole will be held September eighth at five o'clock here in the Central Office Boardroom. And can I get a motion to adjourn? All right, as always, my board member Go Day, very good.